Setting us up on Facebook too, so give me a moment for that. Again, for those of you are jumping in as participants, but non-board members, if you could just turn off your video and audio until your item, that'd be great. Chris, I'm still working to get it going on Facebook. I'll be done in just a second. Okay, we're live on Facebook now too. So, Chris, whenever you're ready, I will, I'll get the slide started here as well for the meeting start.
Todd, are we aware of any board members that won't be joining for tonight?
Not that I'm aware of. Caitlin, have you heard?
I also have not heard of anyone who's not going to be here.
Seems like Bill's usually running late from the clinic, but.
If anybody. If anybody is on the attendee side, that is to be a one of our item presenters. If you could raise your hand, I don't see. I don't know if Sue McDate, were you? Hey Sue, were you on to be presenting tonight?
Only if somebody has questions about the contract I've got with heirs.
Okay, well, I'll promote you in as panelist then and and then you'll be able to jump in if needed.
Sure. Okay, Todd, let's get started. Go ahead with what.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome everyone. Tonight's our village board meeting. Couple of things to go over in terms of meeting process. For those attending by the public attendees, you're going to be automatically muted. Although I'll be able to unmute you as needed as the meeting host. So there'll be two opportunities for public comment this evening. One will be a public comment section for items. Besides the item, that's the public hearing topic. So those public comments can be on items, whether on the agenda or not, besides the item that's listed for a public hearing, which is the the Veridian Heritage Hills blasting. And that would be two minutes per attendee for the public comment section. Then we have a public hearing again for the Veridian Heritage Hills blasting. During that, generally, the village president allows three minutes per participant to provide comments. I think there may be some arrangements made for somebody to present on behalf of a group and that'll be coordinated at that time too by the village president. So participation is pretty easy. I see it looks like, doesn't look like there's any people participating by calling in. So there's a raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen. If you click that, I'll be able to see the order in which hands are raised and then I can bring people in along those lines. I would also note that there is close session expected tonight. When close session occurs, the village board is actually going to mute their video and audio for the meeting they're in. And they will be going to a different device, entering a different Zoom meeting where a closed session will be occurring. Actually, correction. I think the board, the board will actually be leaving this meeting, jumping into a different meeting. I will be staying in this meeting and I'll be putting up a screen like this. There we go. So while we're in closed session, that meeting, that screen will be up. And then once the board comes back to this meeting, I'll take this back off and we'll continue with the meeting. So those are instructions for tonight. Chris, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, I'll just say thank you, Todd, for all those instructions for, it looks like we have thirty-four attendees and twenty-one panelists. If you have any questions or concerns after Todd's definition there, please feel free to raise your hand and we can always answer that question. Or if there's a process situation that you want to ask about. So with that, I will call our village board meeting for February fifteen, two thousand twenty-one to order. Roll call, please.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Bill Random. Kristen Runkie.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here. Thank you. First, we have our confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices and online availability. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on February eleventh. The final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on February eleventh. And the final packet and agenda were made available online on February twelfth.
Thank you. Next we have is our consent agenda showing with a raise of hand. If anybody would like anything pulled, please raise your hand. If not, I'd look for a motion. Nyla?
I move to approve items one through five on the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Nyla Frye. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any comments or questions? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Runkie.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item we have is public comment. As Todd said, you can comment on anything that's on or off the agenda during this time. Please raise your hand if you'd like to. The only item that we wouldn't take any comments right now is for our public hearing item, which you'll have an opportunity at that time. So if you have a public comment for anything, please raise your hand and Todd will bring you in.
Okay, I'll bring in Robert McPherson first.
Good evening. Robert McPherson, seventeen oh three Alexandria Court. Speaking tonight on the subject of the Affordable Housing TIF Extension Policy Proposal that is for the packet. I have sent written comments to the board already that are too lengthy for me to cover in a two-minute period here, so I'm not going to attempt to do that. I would just like to bring though for public's attention, since I did submit it, and I don't know if it will be discussed later, that there is concerns about this as somebody who was on the housing task force and somebody who does work in housing and banking, that this type of policy is going to further depress outside developers that are not large scale from engaging in affordable housing activities within the village based off how it's presented. I also have strong concerns that as it is presented, it would render the request from Cohen Esri to be too excessive because it would take up more than eighty percent of the available balance of the one-year increment from closing tax incremental district too early. And it just seems that if we are very serious about affordable housing here in the village, that we're going to make policies that are friendly towards attracting that type of development as opposed to showing that there's money there, but that we're going to make you jump through excessive amount of hoops to the point that they'll just go somewhere else to develop affordable housing in Dane County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Todd.
Okay, next I have Mary Heimbecker. Okay.
Go ahead, Mary.
My name is Mary Heimbecker, three zero six West Third Street in Wannakee. Also having been on the task force, I would like to see this TIF extension for affordable housing, but to make it so it's more accessible for all the developers coming in and not make it where we won't ever be able to have affordable housing, which we are greatly in need of in this town. And then I would support TIF for Affordable Housing Project for seven oh one to seven oh five West Bean Street when you guys go into closed session to discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Todd, if there's any.
Last call for hands up for items on or off the agenda besides the public hearing.
All right, going once? Going twice? Okay, we're going to move on in our agenda then. Our first item that we have is presentations, update status report on University Native Nations Cultural responsiveness project. Todd, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't want to take too much time away from our guests who've joined us here today and Gavin, Tom and Jesse. So take it away, you guys.
Hi, this is Dr. Jesse Conaway. Good evening, everybody. Village Board President and members, very honored to be with you. Thank you so much for the virtual hospitality tonight. I am with the Nelson Institute at UW Madison and also with Earth Partnership. And my colleague Gavin is on. We have a short presentation for you. Gavin, you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, just wanted to say hello, everyone. My name is Gavin Luder, Managing Director of the University City Alliance. And we've been scoping out projects for you all. This is one project that's already gotten started and we're really thankful to have Jesse as the faculty lead and Tom Wilson as the staff point of contact. So keep going, Jesse.
Okay. My, my students will be completing projects for this partnership that's initiated by university year Gavin's program. I was brought in as an instructor and also the Faculty Associate for Native Nations Partnerships out of the Nelson Institute. These are some of the students who are going to be working on the project. So I anticipate that you'll be meeting them soon. And I know some of them have also joined in this meeting to listen in. And since they have my guest link, they come up as Jesse Conaway in your participants. Moving right along, again, this is a university year partnership between the Ho-Chunk Nation, Village of Wannakee and the Nelson Institute for Environmental Studies. This is our second university year partnership that I've worked on personally with Ho-Chunk Nation. So there's a link here to, and I'll, and I'll share this with Todd so you all can have this presentation. But there's a link here to an archive of some past work with the city of Manona and Ho-Chunk Nation that my students participated in in twenty seventeen. And here's a couple of photos of my students in twenty seventeen working in city of Manona in cultural resource education and also management planning. And so this is a picture of the students working with the Ho-Chunk Nation Tribal Historic Preservation Officer Bill Quackenbush in the ball cap with the glasses. He's on the project team for our current project with Ho-Chunk Nation and with Village of Wannakee. So this is an example. The students will be completing projects. I'm going to show you that list, but just kind of wanted to draw you in here with showcasing some past work that past student groups have done. This was a sign that was drafted for the city of Manona about cultural resource education, community education, about Ho-Chunk Nation presence and history in city of Manona. So similar projects are on deck for Village of Wannakee. So going now to, to this work. So a project team, Todd Schmidt is on that. And as is Chris Zellner, Gavin and myself, Ho-Chunk Nation Leadership. And so we're inviting folks in and I'll share a little more on that in a second, but I wanted to give you a snapshot of the projects that have been identified as priorities for my students to be working on in this current semester. So these are projects that will be completed with mentoring by Ho-Chunk Nation elders, community leaders, professionals and political leaders. So the list is, I also identified by, by your village of Wannakee as priorities for education about Ho-Chunk history and current presence in Dejope, which is Madison and surrounding areas, including Wannakee. So we're really honored to be collaborating with you all on these projects. Land acknowledgement, cultural resources, management, planning, cultural education for the community of, of Wannakee, which includes recommendations for installation, signage, kiosks. And then also going into formal education within the Wannakee schools and the students are going to be completing drafting of curricula guided by Ho-Chunk Nation professionals and also the language division to make curriculum and lesson plans for the schools. So to wrap up, folks, I know you have a lot of business. I want to extend an invitation to, as I mentioned, some of your board on this meeting and thank you for hosting. Some folks are already involved in this. But we want to extend an invitation for others on the board and, and also community members to listen in and be involved with our first community-wide meeting, which will be this Wednesday, noon to one PM Central Time. That's Gavin Luder has a, an invitation Zoom for that. So that is, is one way to be involved is to listen in. Also like to invite folks on this board to visit my, my virtual class and to be a guest speaker. And so I'm putting my email here in case people want to get ahold of me. But again, thank you for hosting and inviting your involvement and suggestions as we move forward. We hope to beam into another one of your meetings as we make more progress. Questions or suggestions for me at this point?
Jesse, I will just mention that Bill Quackenbush was able to jump in. So he's, he's here with us in the meeting, Bill. I'm, Bill, welcome, welcome. I'm glad you could join us. Do you care to share anything from, from Ho-Chunk Nation, Bill?
Oh, no, I just keep covered. Pretty much on, on point. I love her beam. She said beaming back in, which is kind of an interesting term. I've never used that before, but that'll be really good though too. But we're looking forward to working both with the university and the village of Wannakee. I want to see some really beautiful cultural resource projects coming out of this and the students are, I think are pretty excited about this.
Super.
Spending some time with you folks.
Thanks, Bill. And a big thank you to Tom Wilson, who I kind of, I kind of thrust this one upon you a little bit. I twisted your elbow, but Tom, Tom's gonna, gonna be working pretty hard on the committee, sort of as the chair, chairperson of sorts. So I know he's already had quite a few communications going. So thank you, Tom, for participating.
Happy to help. In two little short things. One thing is that one of the projects here is also to recognize the whole chunk to figure out how to do that during the wannabe celebration. And the other thing is that we did involve and, and I think a lot of people here probably know Tim Decora from the community who's really been instrumental in making a lot of contacts with the, with the whole chunk folks. So been very helpful. Just wanted to make sure that the board knew that.
Thanks, Tom. I also did include in the packet that invitation information about that community meeting that is this Wednesday. We'll also be posting that on the village's social media. So that information will be out in the next day.
Okay, that sounds good. This is Jesse. Hi, Bill. Hi, Tom. Good to see everybody. So I'm, thank you so much for hosting us and I'll share my presentation with you, Todd, so that you have that and folks will have my contact information if they want to follow up. And Gavin and Bill and I will loop back with you about requesting another time slot on a future meeting to share progress as we move forward.
All right, sounds good. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.
Thank you. See ya.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Jesse, Bill, Gavin, all of you for joining us tonight and we will, we look forward to having you. I'm very excited. This actually started for me about two years ago with Tim Decora. Tim and I have been friends and competitors, I would say, within the sporting arena at different times. And we just got talking. We were at the grocery store one day and I said, this would be you know, our hundred and fifty years is coming up and it'd be a great opportunity for us to look back in our history and say, you know, we need to recognize our Ho-Chunk Nation that was here before we were. So this is, I'm very excited that we, we're already to the point we're at and I look forward to where we're going to go with this in, in the, in the months ahead and years ahead, for that matter.
That's where all great projects start in the supermarket. Thanks, everyone.
So, Chris, this is Jesse. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to meet you and thank you for your leadership on this project. Look, looking forward to hearing and sharing more. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Next, we have our public hearing and discussion action on Heritage Hills blasting. So first thing we're going to do, I'll introduce or I'll have Todd introduce our folks that are here from Veridian to give a presentation. And then we'll move on from there within our public hearing. So we'll have, everybody have an opportunity to speak that would like to speak this evening. So Todd, take it away.
Yeah, and I'll just begin by introducing Chris Allers, who will introduce the rest of his team, but Chris has been the point person from the very start inception of this project. So Chris, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. And thanks, everybody. It's good to be back talking to everybody. And I realize that there's been quite a few things or conversation going on on social media and also in the paper about what's going on with blasting and some of the vibrations that everybody's feeling. And so I'd be happy to kind of walk everybody through tonight what we're doing and we being Veridian, what's going on out on the site? What, what's with the stone piles that you see and what are they going to be used for? And more importantly, when's, you know, the blasting ultimately going to end? So with me tonight is my engineer, Dan Day, and then DJ, who's from Olson's, Olson Explosives, who's been in project managing the site out there and is met with several of the people involved that are attending tonight as well and that had questions and along with some of the neighbors and and that's what our goal is here to just keep open dialogue going and communicate with everybody that, that has been involved with the process so far, has felt vibrations and might have questions. So with that being said, can everybody see the screen here on the Heritage Hills update?
No, we just, we just see the cameras. So try to screen, try to screenshot that again.
Okay, let me try that again.
Hey, Chris, can you modify your mic maybe a little bit? You're, you're a little staticky.
Yeah, let me just second here. How's that?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, just had to plug it in. And is this sharing yet?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll get started here. Now if I can scroll it. Okay, just an outline of what I'm going to talk about tonight is kind of the history of blasting in this area. This was good for, for us to kind of do a dive into this and find out what, what is the history? Are we the first neighborhood that's been, that's had to blast to get built in Wannakee? And if not, what has been done in the past? Why is Veridian blasting and what are we doing with all of that stone? The stone extraction process and the monitoring that's taking place, we received quite a few detailed questions about this process. And so that's why towards the end, I'm going to bring DJ in to answer some of those more technical questions. And then what is the expected timeline? When will this be done? So to start out with, I just wanted to show a couple of the neighborhoods in Wannakee. Wannakee has a, is a history of blasting to to create new neighborhoods. Just going back to the early nineties, started with, with North Ridge in ninety-three and then jumped down to South Bridge in the mid nineties. And I'm sorry, it started with Wannakee Heights in ninety-three, then went down to South Bridge, then came back up to the North Ridge and finally Kill Kenny, most recently, and, and then us here in Heritage Hills. So as you can see, Wannakee was, was developed over stone. There are parts that are very low and then there are parts that are, that are very high. So in order to build houses and build infrastructure in these areas, there are some blasting requirements to do that. Little history lesson of the area in particular where we're blasting. I thought this was kind of a neat exhibit of aerials here. Starting all the way back in nineteen sixty-eight, you can see there wasn't much activity in our area. Here's the Bryning Family Farm. There's a small quarry operation going on in the north and then Pleasant View Neighborhoods starting to take off here in the south. Fast forward a few years later and another street was added in. Took about eight years to get that built and the quarry grows a little bit as well. All the way up to eighty-seven, continuing to go up the hill with the neighborhood and, and the quarry operation just continuing along. Then when you get into the nineties, that's when things started taking off a little bit and Wannakee Heights started coming online. Again, just to, to grade and develop their street network up here with the quarry operation going on in the north corner there. Finally, in two thousand, Wannakee Heights was finished. The loop was, was in place. Capital Drive was cut in. It connected through and to the, to Pleasant View here, but still nothing to the north of that. Then the North Ridge started coming online in two thousand and five and there was quarreling going on here and some blasting to remove the stone or else even slide it over to the quarry over here where it was then exported out. Two thousand and ten. In most of the infrastructure, most of the roadways are in now in North Ridge and the quarry operation is still continuing along Bryning, nothing happening down here yet. And that takes us to fourteen where North Ridge was all but finished with looping in the road network and then the quarry to the north, still nothing down here. So where are we today? We're right here. This was taken later in the summer and you can see our stone extraction operation is, is what I like to reference it as. It's taking place right in the center up here and this is where our blasting and crushing operation is going on. The center high point here is also going to be where the future park site is going to be. And we're making our efforts to blast in this area and crush and remove the stone to flatten this area out as this will be the real focal point of the neighborhood, the community park. And when we were first going through the planning process, we took many trips up here to really try and figure out how could we capture that view corridor so everybody could enjoy that coming off the top of the hill here. And so what we, what we identified was the opportunity to crush and flatten this and lower this elevation and then build it back up using the dirt that's on site here to build a community park. So why are we blasting? Well, there's, there's four main reasons. One is the park elevation, which I just briefly talked about. The second is street connectivity. The third is cost efficiency and the fourth is reducing construction traffic and emission impacts. The park elevation, which I've shown or briefly discussed about before, is in the center of our development. This bottom red circle is the approximate area that we've completed to date. This area just north of it is the area remaining of rock that we need to extract. And once we're through this, then that should be the, the end of the, the larger blast that subsides. Second item is street connectivity. So when the neighborhood to the north of us or Wannakee Heights was created, this is Capital Drive. And this is where the dead ends. And you can see there's a big hill here, a big berm and under that is some bedrock. And so there will have to be a little bit of future blasting, but it'd be very minimal to connect into this roadway. It's, it's a common practice that happens when new neighborhoods are built. The first one in sets the elevations of the roads back when Wannakee Heights was built and designed, the village and the developer decided on this. This would be the elevation for the street. And so we have to connect into this at some point in the future. We're still a few years away from that, but eventually we're going to have to tie in our road to this. Cost efficiency. There's a little bit of a history here and why there is so much blasting when new neighborhoods comes on in Wannakee. It's not just because the neighborhoods are being built on bedrock. It's because Wannakee has some of the strangest or strongest road restrictions when it comes to how much base course of stone must be installed of any municipality in Dane County. So what does that mean? Well, here's a slight diagram, a little diagram. As you can see, this is a standard elevation of a roadway of, and the, the little circles here are the stone, is the amount of stone that would be needed when building just a local road in a neighborhood. In normal or typical municipalities, I should say, Madison, 12 inches of stone is needed. Verona is nine inches. Sun Prairie is nine inches. Wannakee is 20 inches, 20 inches of stone. That's very expensive, but it's also benefits the municipality because it can withstand heavy traffic and equates to less road maintenance down the road. Or in the future, I should say. But it also comes with a big burden on the cost side. And then you must also either import a lot of stone to do this, to build these roads or extract the stone from the existing areas to build these roadways. So needless to say, the, the big piles that we have out there, that could have been substantially smaller if there wasn't so much stone required underneath the asphalt and all of the roadways that we have out there. Next item, reducing emissions and safety. So by, by going through this process and this extraction, extraction process of blasting and crushing our stone out there, we don't have to import all of the stone that would be coming in. We will put some numbers behind it and we're saving about 15,000 truckloads of two things. One is stone coming into the neighborhood that we'd have to go to a quarry and obtain. And the second thing is, is now that we've, we've removed all of this stone from this park, we've created this hole that we are going to backfill with all of our basement dirt and build that park back up to a flat surface. But we've now given ourselves the opportunity to reduce the number of truckloads that are coming out of the neighborhood, onto Division Street, onto Main Street, onto Schumacher. And we're keeping everything on site. Not one stone will leave the site that we see out there right now. All of that stone will be reused on site. Less construction traffic is usually viewed upon as a positive, given just for safety and also, you know, noise and vibration and everything else that, that from, from the number of truckloads that would have had to have been brought in and out on Division Street alone. We do have a strategic onsite traffic plan. Once we have people living in the neighborhood, our trucks will be routed around the houses that are being built currently just to ensure safety is, is being maintained in our, in our neighborhood as well. There are currently about 13 or 14 basements in place in our neighborhood. So again, when, when the blasting occurs, the vibration is felt by our houses as well. And we just want to ensure that everybody's safe in there. Lastly, just for a carbon emissions math equation, we came up with the reduction of over 80,000 pounds of carbon dioxide, assuming our trucks would have to make about a seven mile trip coming in and out to either A, go import stone from quarries that we are contracted with or B, taking the tops or the basement dirt and hauling it offsite to someplace else. Again, everything is staying on site that you see out there. The extraction process. So we did, we did get questions again, who's, who's supervising this? And what is, you know, what is Veridian in charge or who's in charge out there? Well, we've contracted Yahara Materials. They're the experts in this and they work with Olson Explosives to oversee all of the extraction work. It includes blasting, crushing and cleaning of the stone to use on site. I talked before about what the stone would be used for, but in more detail, when we blast and crush the stone, we can use that to backfill trenches where we're going to put water and sewer pipe. And we can use it for our road construction. I showed you that diagram with how deep all of the roads are and they need all of that stone. Well, we've also set up an operation to clean the stone, take it one step further. This is a little more expensive, but it also will save money in the long run. We use clear stone, it's called. That means that the stone's been cleaned from all the finds and all of our basements and our driveways. By keeping it on site, short term, it's more expensive, but long term, when you factor that amount over every house that's going to be built out there, it'll ultimately save money and allow us to still try and hit our attainable price points that we're striving for. Monitoring and seismic reading. So this is where we got some questions that were pretty detailed. And I'd like to hand it over to DJ just to answer these. These are taken verbatim just from, from the sheet that was submitted to us, I believe, by Wannakee Heights in North Ridge. So DJ, do you want to answer these real quick?
Yep. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, you're clear.
DJ with Olson Explosives, first question. Based on these blasting and seismic monitoring results, does Olson Enterprises Explosives or Veridian better understand the underground geology of the blasting area, including the direction and intensity of shock waves through the limestone bedrock? We had a good understanding of the geology before any blasting was done because we had done some test drilling out there to know kind of where the rock was and what the rock competency was like. With any data-driven research, the more data you have, the more patterns you can see. We've since gained some more knowledge, how the rock on the ridge is transferring energy more than predicted. However, it's still within the safe blasting vibration limits of the state and the village. With that said, the K value, which is the ground constant, is five to six times that of similar limestone in southern Wisconsin region. Second question, the seismic monitoring measure only surface effects or are the monitors anchored to bedrock? Seismograph standards are based upon exterior ground vibration levels, which take into account the structure's response to vibration. These measurements on the exterior also allow for consistency. The geophone or transducer that we place on the ground and in some cases is buried, is attached and secured by spiking the physical attachment. And sometimes it cannot be accomplished within someone's home. The outside measurement is consistent and allows comparison of the measurements on a day-to-day basis. So to answer that, the geophone is not attached directly to bedrock. And seismic monitoring also measures air blast in addition to the ground vibration. Third question, can seismic monitoring data be used to predict which neighborhoods might be most affected? It can be used to define a consistent ground constant as orientation and location of each blast change between blast to blast. One neighborhood may experience more air blast and another neighborhood may experience more ground vibration or vice versa as our orientation changes between blasts. And the last question, are there any recent monitoring records available for the public to view? Seismic data, let's see here, sorry. All Wisconsin blasting records are kept on file for seven years and public viewing is at the discretion of each customer. The reports contain a lot of legal, their legal binding documents that contain proprietary information. So as far as public viewing, that's kind of a case-by-case basis. Any more on that, Chris?
No, those were the detailed questions that needed help with. So thank you. Okay, so finally, the timeline, when are we going to be done with, with this centralized and blasting and more of the larger area that we're continuing to extract from? Our target blasting completion is the end of March. That's when we should be done with what we're doing now. Once we've, we've conducted that final blast, we still will continue to crush and clear stone or clean stone that's out there. But that should be really what we're done with doing here in 2021. Like I showed before, there might be smaller blast sites needed in the future when we do get up and try to connect into Capital Drive. One thing to note is, is when you are doing a much more controlled area or a linear area of blasting, it's very, it's a lot smaller and we don't know yet. We haven't done our soil studies. We don't know how deep the stone is. But I just, again, in good faith, wanted to let everybody know that there, there might be some smaller isolated blasts needed in the future just to tie in roadways or lower house elevations approximately in this area up the hill. We're, we are currently just working on our phase two. So we're probably, and that this will take us all the way through 2021. So we're probably a year, two, or even three away from, from having to do that again. So everything that's going on now, there is an end in sight. It'll be again, the, the end of March and then everything should cease from there. So that's all I've got tonight. I'll hand it back off to you, Chris. Thanks again for giving us the opportunity here to present and give everybody an update.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Thanks, DJ. Dan, if you want us to join, that's great. You didn't get to speak tonight, so maybe, maybe you have laryngitis, but all good. Or maybe Chris just put the muzzle on you. I don't know. Either way, based on all of that, thank you for providing all that information. But at this point, I'm going to open up our public hearing, followed by then our board will ask questions potentially or have conversation in regards to this as well. So with that, I'm going to open.
Chris, can I just ask, did you, were you wanting to have, was there staff input to be expected prior to public hearing or is that after? Because I think Brian and Kevin were prepared to offer some additional information. Either way is fine, but I, but I, I think they were prepped with some information.
Okay.
I think we were, we were going to follow up after the public hearing, right, Brian?
That was my understanding, yes.
Okay, sorry to.
No, no, that's fine. It's always good to ask questions. You gave the instructions at the beginning of the meeting and you just tried to change them. No, I'm kidding. But let's, let's open up the public here because I know that this is a very important topic for many people and we need to hear from them. So Todd, if you want to enter people in, welcome them in and keep track of our timeframes. Caitlin, are you taking?
Yeah, Caitlin's taking care of that, Chris. I would just mention, Chris, do you have someone in particular representing a group of residents or was that not going to happen?
So I'm not sure. I think I saw that Dave Dees was on. Yes, he's on. So Dave, if you don't mind coming in, I know that there was, there's about just roughly a dozen people. If that's something that you want to go through with that group and we were going to give you 10 minutes for that, that you could go through the, the items that you had addressed onto the village board. So I don't know if Dave is there that he could.
Yeah, I guess I would say unless Dave had someone else designated to give that talk.
So it looks like Andrea's got her hand up. So she's one of the people that's listed on here. So maybe she's the one that's designated.
Okay, we'll find out.
Why don't you bring Andrea in?
Okay, go ahead, Andrea.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
You sound great.
Great. It's my understanding that I will be given as well as Bob Harvey cumulative of 10 minutes at least. So I'm prepared to start. Okay. My name is Andrea Brandt and I've lived in Wannakee since the summer of 2019. I'm a mom of two young boys and we love our home and living in Wannakee. Getting outside to play, explore and get exercise is an everyday necessity. A couple of weeks ago, my boys and I walked over where the road dead ends at the top of the hill where Lexington and Capital Drive meet. You actually just saw a picture of that earlier tonight. The plowhead left a small pile of fresh white snow while my boys climbed up and down sliding on it. A truck drove up with two workers from Olson Explosives. One worker said there was going to be a blast soon and I said, I didn't know that and told my four and seven-year-old boys, we'd better go. I mentioned to the worker, I was concerned how frequent and strong the blasts were getting and that it oftentimes scared my children. How long is this going to be going on? Many of us have been wondering. I told him that my neighbors and my family and I are concerned. Other neighbors have reported cracks in walls and foundation damage to their homes, believed to be caused by blasting. He said he was there to test the blasts and they wouldn't be doing anymore if they were too strong, that the blasts, he thought, are not any more loud or strong than a thunderstorm. I told him I disagreed. The fact is, the blasts are very strong, seem inconsistent, feel unpredictable and are experienced differently when you are standing outside versus standing inside a house. A group of my neighbors and I have submitted a numbered document ahead of today's hearing because there are a lot of concerns and questions we have that we want addressed and answered. Thank you for taking those. There are significant size mounds of crushed gravel accumulating on the Veridian site. Right now, they're covered in snow. I heard a neighbor say it looked like sled marks going down one. When we drove by the other day, one of my children said, what's behind that pile of rock, Mom? Construction sites, mining operations, quarries where blasting is done and holes in the ground are notoriously listed as nuisances. But not only nuisances, attractive nuisances. There are real safety concerns. But whether something is called one thing or another, damage to walls or cracks in foundations simply are results of something. Children, however, may look at a small pile of snow at the end of a road and a massive pile of snow-covered crushed gravel and view them both the same, something to explore. But whether Veridian or any other developer have been allowed or are being allowed to do something, we have a responsibility as a community to pause, understand better, make adjustments to limitations locally and protect our residents and their homes, no matter what, now and in the future. Consider this, when my neighbors and I hear things from DJ Dolphin and Olson Enterprises that several blasts didn't go as planned, vibrations were stronger than expected and impact from blasting moved in the opposite direction as planned, it's not reassuring. We're talking about placing explosives into rock to blast holes. We feel rumbles through the floors of our homes that rattle the house and make us stop, catch a breath. It raises eyebrows, confirms our worries and makes us call each other in the other room or text our neighbors. You feel that one? While we see and hear seismic monitoring testing is being done, we want accurate accessible data that can predict and show which neighbors and households are most affected, including what is being unearthed underground. We wonder what is this uncovering and what possible geological concerns we may need to be prepared for. We want better communication and the ability to better understand how the handling of this might be similar to other blasting that will occur in the area. For instance, for the Quincy Ridge Quarry Expansion that neighbors the Heritage Hills, Veridian Development and Wannakee Residence. Monitoring blasting, mining activity and these type of operations and understanding the impact on Wannakee Residence needs to be a top priority and done consistently. And whether or not these types of operations fall into some category or definition currently, we need to consider the overall impact on residents and properties in our community regardless. Reading through the ordinances currently on the books, it's not my chosen nighttime story, but I've taken the time to do so, learning what non-metallic mining is and asking what's allowed in this community for that and excavations for construction purposes. And speaking here tonight on behalf of myself, my family and a lot of other concerned neighbors that we need to take a closer look. The accumulating rock piles and blasting coming from Heritage Hills site looks and sounds and feels like a full-blown mining operation. And I'm curious, why are there not more village protections in place specifically for proximity of blasting to homes as well as attractive nuisances regarding mining quarries and blasting in Wannakee? There needs to be a thorough review of the current articles for non-metallic mining and consideration for amending beyond state regulations to better represent the needs of Wannakee Residence. I'm going to turn it over now to my neighbor, Bob Harvey. No, thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin, how much time is left? Just so I make sure they have enough.
I'm there at four minutes and 18 seconds left of their 10 minutes.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Go ahead. Just want to make sure you're aware.
Go ahead, Bob.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Bob.
I am Bob Harvey. I live at 932 Lexington Way and have lived there since 1998. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Todd for his appointment to the leadership program. I think that's a nice feather in your hat, Todd.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, we've heard from Veridian and Andrea is the first part of our presentation. Normally I'm not home during the day, but recently I was during one of the blasts and I felt a very strong tremor shaking our house. And I estimate we're about 1,500 and maybe 2,000 feet from, as a crow flies from where the blast is. And I felt the floor shake and I kept wondering, what is this doing to the foundation of my house? Other neighbors have reported the same thing. So these two people who were doing the testing that Andrea referred to said, it's like a snowstorm. So these two people who were doing the testing that Andrea referred to said, it's like a snowstorm. Well, if that's the case, the storm was 20 feet above my house and lightning struck the foundation. I do have some very deep concerns about what effect this is having on our property values. And perhaps the environment. So where they test. Makes a difference. And if they only do testing on top of the surface, well, guess what? A lot of the homes have basements. In fact, all of the homes have basements. So how do we sit in terms of bedrock? Now. The Veridian says they follow the state requirements. I'm wondering, is that a minimal? I'm not sure when the state requirements are written, how they were written, were they written for. Mines that were outside of villages and city limits. Wanakee is no longer a rural community. We have development right across the street from our homes and in the backyards. So I think we need to take a look at whether the state requirements are sufficient enough. And I think we also need to keep in, in mind the environment. We live in an aquifer that is, that services five wells for the, the village. Is there going to be any negative effects? We don't know. I, I'm guessing Veridian would say probably not. But if probably today turns into a, oh yeah, we got a problem now, 10 years from now, that's an issue. So I, I think we need to be cognizant of that. So besides an environmental study, we'd also like to review the current village requirements. And if the state requirements aren't strict enough, I think we should consider stronger protection for our residents. Oversight, I'm not sure who's overseeing this. Dolphin works for the, the blasting company works for Veridian. So I mean, there's a fiscal connection with those two. Is that true oversight by an outside party? I don't know. I think you need to address that issue. And then finally, more communication, which we are doing now. So that's good to see. I would like to get into why I moved to Wanakee in the first place, if you, you have time for that. Okay, 22 years ago, a job changed, moved us from the Cedarburg area to Madison. I went to school at UW, but I lived on campus area. So being a student and living in a campus area does not give you a flavor for where you want to locate a family. My wife, my son and I spent a couple of weekends touring Madison. And wherever we went, we asked people two questions. Where would you live and where would you not live? So based on the observations and the responses from people, we kind of picked out half a dozen cities and villages around the city of Madison. We got all kinds of information as best we could.
Go ahead, Bob. You can, I'll give you an extra minute. Go ahead. Hopefully you can remember that time.
Including report nine from the school, which breaks the schools. We compared those to the Ozaki County schools that we had. And then my son and I came back during the week to visit those schools to make sure he was comfortable as well. After we gathered all the information, we chose Wanakee for three reasons. One, it was a very strong sense of community. That was important to us. Two, it had a very good school system. That was equally important. And thirdly, it was a community that planned well for the future. In other words, it's a great place to live. We, I, I, we have not been disappointed yet. So I thank you for your time. And we ask you, please give substantive, substantive time and attention to our concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, so let's move on then. Todd, I, I see a couple of hands are up. Go ahead.
Yes, Christina Schmilk. There we go.
Oh, sorry. This is, my name is Ezra Schmilk. Ezra Schmilk, 500 Hillcrest Drive. And I wanted to share just a little bit about my experience of the blasting. Five, I live on Hillcrest Drive. I'm about a block away from the blasting that's happening. I'm between the library and the vision. And I just want to share an experience I had out of concern for my fellow neighbors in Wanakee. I thankfully had been doing something in my basement, took, had some pictures, my downstairs room. And in July, which came in handy in December when I noticed a large crack that went through my foundation. That was not there before. I contacted Veridian. They sent me to Mr. Dolphin. I emailed him with pictures and he was very prompt in getting back to me the same day. He came out, that was a Friday. He came out on Monday. Cause I let him know that from another neighbor who told me she had damage in her foundation, believed to be through blasting. You know, that it was just going nowhere. So I made an appointment to get it repaired and let him know, hey, if you want to come out to see it. Before I get repaired, but my hope is that accountability will be taken. I, I couldn't see any reason where, why it was there now and not before. Growing up in Seattle, I'm used to earthquakes and I could tell you, this is what they feel like folks, the blasting that's been happening. But Mr. Dolphin arrived on the Monday with two other gentlemen. And it, although friendly, it was a complete waste of my time. They, I, I'm hearing some of the similar sentiments as far as this couldn't have been us. You know, we're following state regulations. You know, it's like a thunderstorm and you know, we have an old house and when a plow goes by, it's similar. And I can tell you, we've, the house is built in 1955. I believe 1954, 1955, we've lived in it for, since 2016. And the only thing that makes sense based upon timing and the fracture. The only thing different has been the blasting. So my concern is for my neighbors. I feel like the accountability is not there. I don't know who's helping with it, but I was deeply disappointed. There's, yep. It, it was a waste of my time. That's, that's all I have to share.
Thank you, Ezra.
Okay, yes, Robert McPherson.
Good evening again. Robert McPherson, 1703 Alexandria Court. I did send in advanced comments. I'd hope that the board has had a time to look at them. I did include pictures with my comments. That were provided that showed damage that had appeared after the blasting occurred. Those were from the Wanakee Heights area. I also included in my attachments and I want to bring to attention, just in case it's not obvious enough. That there was a time when the board did actively work to protect its residents against blasting activities when it was conducted next to a residential area. Now, I understand that this is reaching back into history, but we did have some of the same staff involved then as we did now. And I'm sure that they will get their chance to address this when they make comments later on. However, what I would like to point out is that there were very significant protections put in place for residents of the village and for the safety of the residents of the village. For example, in the previous blasting permit that was in place for North Ridge Estates. There was a requirement for a six foot fence to be erected around the blasting area. This would directly address the issues that have talked, that have been talked about earlier, where kids are going and sledding on these dirt mounds that are being created from the blasting. Second, there was a requirement placed upon the developer, the developer's blaster. To go in and actually take pictures if the residents requested of the properties that were in proximity to the blast. Now, I realize based off of the stories that you've heard tonight from residents, which I deeply appreciate the residents that have already spoken. That this isn't just a Wanakee Heights problem. I have had people reach out to me as far a ways down into the numbered streets areas. Talking about their houses rattling from the explosions. That is not normal. I myself went out and witnessed a blast on the first of February. I stood against a fire hydrant. It about, it staggered me. I was trying to film it. I started cussing because I was surprised. So I had to throw out the film, but the point is. It's a lot stronger than it's been made up that we've been told that it is compared to previous blasting throughout the village. There's no reason that the village couldn't have enacted stronger protections for, for residents for this project. There's nothing out there that really restricts them from doing this. There's nothing out there that says that we have to not tell residents by mail. For example, when blasting is going to occur, you know, for a village board that sometimes is a little reticent on social media. They sure do tell residents a lot to go to social media to know if there's blasting occurring. So there are a lot of easy steps that could have been repeated from the past, you know, look to the past for what we did. And they could be, you know, passed for future projects. You know, I know we're talking about Veridian tonight and this might get me, my comment shut down. But we're not talking about Quincy Ridge, which is right next door and it's going to start blasting soon. If those quarrying operations expand and you're going to have the same problems all over again. It doesn't seem like it's too late that the village could somehow come up with some plans that would better protect its residents. Could do the fiduciary duty of the village and protecting taxpayers. Property values dropped. It's not just bad for those homeowners in those areas. It's bad for the entire village and we would view that as a problem. So we come to looking for solutions. I think residents have come with a lot of great solutions. You have solutions in the past that have worked. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Todd, next.
Carrie Falk, I'll be bringing in. Okay, there you go, Carrie.
Hi, Carrie Falk, 610 Boulder Trail. Um, you know, I'm just on here tonight to, to listen and learn more because I feel like. You know, it's, it's hard to know who has control over all the blasting. I've, I've made some calls and always get referred to, you know, old state requirements. And you know, that's something that might be out of my expertise in regards to investigating. And learning about blasting and, and state requirements. But what I took today was, I did talk to DJ on one particular blast. It seems stronger because I have a shelf in my basement and I work from home. And since 2013 and I had something fall off my shelf. And I'm like, this seems like stronger. So I'm going to call the city and express my concern. And so, you know, I'm, I'm learning from DJ and he's discussing, you know, some things about our area. That this particular blast was stronger because. We do have a nice, a strong rock bed here. That when we built our house, we had to pay to get, you know, rocks removed with no blasting. And our deck, you know, we had to build it to code, but it's, it's, one post is sitting on the rock bed. So my house is connected. And you know, I don't know if you guys are looking for more information, how can we put a seismic meter? If we can't, you said you couldn't put it in the ground and attach it to something. Well, we have houses. I don't know. If that's something that we can attach, you know, use our houses to get these meter readings so that you have good information to know what we're feeling. So I don't know. I guess that's my, my question is, can we attach it to our houses without affecting them? To get those meeting readings for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. Next, Todd.
Danielle Johnson. Okay, Danielle.
Go ahead, Danielle. There you go.
Hi, my name is Danielle Johnson. I live pretty close to Easy Street off North Division, right by the quarry. On the bottom of the hill of the quarry. And just to echo, I, I think we don't need to pile on, but I've been working home, from home from the pandemic. And my whole house shakes and I'm probably one of the farthest ones away of all the people that have been talking tonight. And I can appreciate all the nuisance arguments and they're very compelling, but I think the biggest one here is, is more financial. And what does the village of Wanakee want its town to look like in five to 10 years? Because I think that if this blasting while Heritage Hills may be temporary. You know, this quarry is a much bigger concern and that's not temporary. That will be continuous for years to come. And right now I'm considering leaving the town. I'm considering leaving my house here, which I've only been in for four years. Because the financial concerns that the value of my house may considerably decrease. And then I think there's a lot of legal questions unanswered here. And one of them is, who pays to fix the cracks in the basement? Who pays for the depreciation in the value of my house because of the blasting? When I sell, I have to disclose that there's blasting. I have to disclose there's a quarry there and that there's live blasting. What's that going to do to potential buyers? Veridian, Veridian, you will have to disclose to every person you sell a lot to, that there's a quarry down the road and there'll be blasting. And I can guarantee you that this will be a much bigger media event down the line as this continues and depending on the outcome of that lawsuit is. So I think there's just a lot of questions here and I think just pose a question to the board to really think about what you want the community. The village of Wanakee to look like in five to 10 years, because right now I think they have a great vision. But with this continued blasting, it may deter a lot of residents to go elsewhere.
Okay, thank you, Danielle.
Adam Hartung. Okay, Adam.
Hi, this is Stephanie Hartung.
Oh, sorry, Stephanie.
That's okay. I live on Division Street. I'm at 517 Hillcrest Drive and I'm right across from the Veridian Development. I want to start by saying thank you for providing a space to discuss the issue of blasting within the community. I really appreciate it. My understanding is that the blasting has done well within state regulations. But I'd propose that the village board be an advocate for current villagers by getting better information about how developments will be constructed prior to approvals. And by setting boundaries with companies that protect citizens. Examples of boundaries could include stricter requirements for blast intensity, frequency and duration than the state requires. Requiring the completion of a home inspection prior to new construction or blasting. I actually asked that after the second blast and I was denied. Providing citizens with a clear path for how to resolve conflict between the quarry or development companies and homeowners. I'm asking for this as a result of my own experiences. I've personally been dealing with damage to my property since construction began this spring. I have not felt heard about my concerns despite having been in contact with the village, Olson Explosives, Veridian Management and the state. The state's been great. Going forward, my hope is that the village board will be better advocates for and provide better protections to homeowners. And then something I just heard when Veridian presented was the road depth was 12 inches, nine inches and 20 inches in Wanakee. And I just thought that was kind of interesting and I'm wondering why that is the case. And is there any leeway for that? Cause it sounds like it was. It makes building roads cost prohibitive, building them in other ways cost prohibitive. So I wonder if that's something that could be addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Todd, next.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any hands. If you want to take a few moments, Chris. Hope I have a Mrs. Mineholtz. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Sandra Mineholtz. I can't change it. I teach at school. So I teach at the high school. I live at 512 Skyview Drive and we've lived here in May, it'll be four years. And I have to tell you that after living here for 26 days. We had a blast from the quarry, not obviously Heritage Hills. But it rumbled our house so bad. My kids thought that an airplane had gone into our garage. Another kid thought that maybe our furnace blew up because we had problem after problem with our house. My oldest is in high school and she is here Monday, Tuesday. All kids are here Wednesday. And I have to say that the frustrating part that I get. As a community member is when my high schooler emails me or texts me and says, mom, they're blasting again. When is this going to be done? This is affecting our internet. This is affecting, you know, us being able to work at home. So I really look at this from a community standpoint. I look at this from a property owner. I'm, I'm fearful. I want to move as well. I echo the previous person. It's just not something that I'm comfortable being here. We've, we've replaced and fixed foundations in previous homes. I don't want to do that for our current home. And I'm afraid that as time goes on, things are going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Todd, any others?
Not at the moment, Chris. And sorry about that, Mrs. Mineholtz. I know you're stuck with that with school and I always enjoy working with you in your class.
Thank you. Me too.
Hope, did I see hand just go up?
I think that was Sandra putting hers down. So, okay, then seeing no other hands, I'm going to close. I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this. And, um, first off, I'm gonna say thank you to to everybody for your comments uh, and and concerns. I have three pages worth of notes that I was taking as you were going through all of them. Um, hearing, hearing you. I think I'm gonna refer to staff before our board members ask any questions or members on um, some of the comments. Um, I think Brian and Kevin are gonna address some, some of the things that were the comments that were made to start with. And then, um, we can have our discussion right after that. So who wants to start? Kevin or Brian?
I can go if you want me to.
Go ahead, Brian.
So, um, I did take notes too, Chris. I guess what I would like to be able to do is kind of provide an overview and then I'll try to go back and maybe knock off some of the questions, although not all of them are legal questions, I would say. Um,
Brian, can you tell everybody who you are for those?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Brian Kleidmeyer. I'm the village attorney for Wanakee. Um, and you know, some people touched on it and and we we're not in a position to be able to discuss, uh, Quincy Ridge Quarry tonight. There is a agenda item that's a few, uh, points down where we're gonna have a very brief discussion on process. But that quarry, uh, it's it's in litigation right now. And it's also in the town. I mean, the only jurisdiction that the village had over it was because of zoning. Um, but for the operation, the quarry, the village does not have, uh, rules or regulations that would apply because it's in the town, but we're not gonna be able to talk much about that. Um, and and unfortunately for for a lot of the commenters that I've heard tonight, I'm gonna have some news that isn't gonna make them very happy because we are left with the Wisconsin statutes and the Wisconsin administrative code as what the guidelines are. And that's what I I'm gonna talk generally about that and also talk about some specifics, but um, we do have an ordinance that addresses blasting. It's section twenty six dash ninety one of the village code. And what that ordinance does is what we're allowed to do. It says that, um, the provisions of S, chapter SPS three oh seven of the Wisconsin Administrative Code are what going to is what's gonna apply to blasting in the village. And it's those rules and regulations that essentially are the limits of what we can apply. And that's based on statutes and that's based on, you know, a lot of relatively detailed information in that in that chapter that I'm about to talk about. But there there's a statute that gives the Department of Safety and Professional Services the authority to adopt the rules and regulations that are in this SP three oh seven and it's that's the chapters, uh, titled explosives and fireworks. And I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna read a lot of statutes to you all, but I'm just gonna, I gotta read this one. So the statute, which is one oh one point fifteen sub two, sub three, says the department shall promulgate rules to affect the safeties of mines, explosives, quarries and related activities, which includes blasting. Such rules shall provide for the establishment of uniform limits on permissible levels of blasting resultants to reasonably assure that blasting resultants do not cause injury, damage or unreasonable annoyance to any person or property outside any controlled blasting site area. The phrase establishment of uniform limits is key, and that's one that you then basically see in the code. When you get into this SP three oh seven, it has a lot of regulations that touch on some of the issues that have been raised by residents. It deals with when, when does a blaster have to notify parties about the blasting? It addresses, um, what type of information that that a blasting log has to be kept and what type of information has to go in the blasting log? Um, it identifies the permissible level of the blasting. It, you know, one of the things that's been talked about is this idea of a survey for, um, you know, basically going to homes and take pictures. Well, this code deals with that issue and essentially it sets up, I'm gonna just say like a circle area where if you live within a certain number of feet or of of where the blasting is gonna occur, then the blasting operator has to provide notice. And there's a formula in the code that identifies, okay, and it's, you know, it's complicated, but it basically says, you know, if the blast is gonna be this big and you live within certain feet, then you have to, we're gonna have to come and we're gonna have to meet with you and offer to take pictures. But if you're not within that area, then there's no authority that the village would have to require a blasting operator to take those pictures. We could, you know, we could talk to them. We could ask them if they're willing to do that, but we can't impose that on the 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 operator. Um, it gets into things like the seismographs. I know that there's some technical issues that have been raised by residents on seismographs and and measuring those and that that's addressed in the code. I I'm just gonna kind of double back here. And, you know, the purpose of this code, again, chapter SPS three oh seven is to establish standards for the use of explosive materials. Talks about the scope is identifying uniform limits on permissible levels. I mean, that's a phrase that's used throughout. So we, the village code right now incorporates this, these standards into our code. All blasting operators are subject to these. We do have the ability to enforce this because it's in our code. And so one question is, we we do have the ability at a staff level to work with people and find out whether or not any of these code provisions have been violated. But we don't have the ability to impose stricter requirements on blasting operators than is what is in the administrative code. Um, I just wanted to try to kind of touch on some of the comments that I heard. Um, I know we talked, we can't talk about the quarry. You know, I I think that we, um, you know, we can sit down and and talk to to the operators to see if there's a willingness on their part to go above and beyond what the code provisions, uh, require. Um, that's a conversation that can take place. Um, I just wanna, you know, clarify for you that if if they they choose not to do that, th- they don't have to do it. Um, you know, I think there was a comment related to, oh, oh, go ahead if you wanna jump. I mean, I'm I'm just kind of trying to work through my notes here.
Kevin, why don't let Brian finish? Kevin, let's let Brian finish it. That's okay.
Yeah, that's good. Just if he was pausing, look at his notes. I was just gonna fill the gap.
Okay. Brian, you ready to go or should I have Kevin fill it?
I think you can probably just have him fill it. I mean, I might be, I might, I can answer some additional questions. But I think, I mean, that that's essentially globally what covers this. And unfortunately, I know is not what residents want to hear, but um, I I this is an opinion that this is my opinion. I've talked to numerous attorneys inside and outside of my office and with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And nobody has disagreed with my opinion. And I think the statute and the code are pretty straightforward when they use phrases establishment of uniform limits.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I'm sure board members will have some questions for you. Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanna add one thing that Brian didn't touch on that I think is important is I think there's been questions about who's who's doing the monitoring. And, uh, you know, the answer that you get is that the the blaster is required to to monitor all his blasts and actually then provide that information at at a state level. We've taken one additional step. We have an independent, uh, company. They're based out of Illinois. It's called Vibrotech. We've been using, um, we started using them on Northridge Estates. We used them in Kilkenny. Now we're using them here as a requirement of the permits. We 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 asked and and we got permission from them to do additional monitoring to to verify that the the blasting that they're doing is is within the state requirements. And so that's one additional step I think that we're taking. And I I think we heard the question about Northridge Estates and and Wanakee Heights and and how far away, you know, of homes were notified to do the pre-inspection blasting. And I had looked at that document for, I think it's like seventeen, eighteen years ago when that when that occurred, when we were working through that that particular issue. But if I think if we if we went back and looked at it a little bit closer, there's just a handful of houses on there. There's probably, you know, twenty, twenty houses on there. Maybe that's twenty, thirty percent of the of the subdivision. There's actually a line, you know, drawn. And that really was the distance that was required as part of the state requirements that they had to do that, offer that pre-blasting inspection. So that's why it was it was done. And I can, I can add that there are many blasters that will actually offer that over and above because they want their own protection so that, you know, if there is an issue down the road that they're that they're able to, you know, show, hey, this is what it looked like before and this is what it looked like now. Had a number of conversations with the with the DJ Dolphin. And I, from what I'm hearing from from residents that he's been responsive, I don't think that they're always, uh, you know, happy with the answer that he's getting. He's, uh, again, offered to, uh, come on site to anybody that has concerns regarding, you know, cracks in in walls or foundations and 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 visit with you and share. He might not be able to leave the data with you, but he will share the the data with you in terms of what the blasting records have shown. And then, uh, Brian, I don't know what the answer is, and maybe that's something we need to look at a little bit farther. You know, what's the recourse if somebody's not, you know, um, satisfied? And I think you're ready to to tell that, you know, it's it's not gonna be on the village's insurance if there's a a claim here. It's gonna be on the on the blasters.
Well, I mean, we have a development agreement in place with 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 Veridian that we have with all developers that, um, e- essentially governs the, you know, and what it says is they have to abide by all rules and regulations that are applicable to the developments, um, and and to the actions they're taking under the agreements. And so all of this relates to the development. So, you know, yeah, the indemnification that we have, language we have in the agreement would cover the village. I know that unfortunately that doesn't necessarily help a resident if they believe that, um, there's been damage, but, um, it it is not something that that the village would be held liable for. So to to answer your question.
Okay, thank you, guys. Um, as I normally do, I'm gonna have, uh, the board members, if you have comments and or questions for, um, it looks like DJ, Dan and Chris are still here as well. And then Kevin or 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 Brian, uh, we should ask those questions at this time or make comments, um, how you see fit. So um, in no order, I'm just going based on who's on the screen and whoever's last to the meeting because they were late generally gets called first. So that would mean that I'm gonna call on Dr. Random first, not to put light in here because this is a very very important topic, but, um, Dr. Random, any comments and or questions?
Well, first, I'm guessing that, but in my words, is it basically the village has no control over what the, we can't, we can't go over and above what the state has allowed. Is that correct?
We can't without, uh, the agreement of the other party. So we can't impose this upon someone like we can impose, for example, our subdivision, you know, certain provisions of our subdivision ordinance. For example, the what's been discussed earlier today, the the thickness of the road. That is something that we can impose upon them, notwithstanding the fact that it is more than other communities. This, we have to abide by the language in the state code unless we get an agreement to do otherwise.
This one goes to Kevin. I'm guessing that the the depth of that road, uh, contributes to the longevity of the road and the in our long-term costs.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm not bashful about saying that we have the highest standard for road, you know, road improvements within Dane County. And and that'll pay off for us long term.
And third, I I I seem to remember there was sort of, when we were going over this development, there was, uh, i- including by the original landowners, if they're not still owners, was that there was gonna be a good neighbor policy. And I I feel like we're sort of stepping on that right now. That there was, I believe there's and I and I guess maybe this is also a Kevin question that that this can be done in smaller allotments if they were to choose so, is is that correct? As far as that the size of the cuts wouldn't have to be so big if they chose to do it that way?
I, yeah, I think that's accurate. I think that's a good question for them. We don't have the ability to regulate that, but I think what you're pointing to is is there some things that, you know, we heard tonight in terms of is there is there ways that they can reduce? You know, the 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 blasting effects by by doing smaller, tighter, uh, whatever they do. And I don't, I don't know the exact terms either, but I I do know that there's there are methods that would reduce the, you know, the 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 effect of 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 their blasting effects. And and I heard fencing is is something that somebody was interested in. You know, we don't have necessarily have those requirements on the blasting and we don't have it, uh, maybe on the fencing, but they are coming in, you know, soon for another phase in in their project. And I think the fencing is something we can, we can certainly talk about and and have a discussion on. And I think if you if you wanna point to your good neighbor policy, I I think that 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 is is well said and and I think and and I think they're hearing you say that. So I I think that's, uh, something that that I think they're listening well and you're gonna get a chance to like, uh, respond to that when they come back in for their next, uh, phase of of their development.
I think that's for me. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Okay, so next in my line is Phil Williams. So Phil, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Kevin, I'm also not bashful about our requirements on the streets. I can remember a few years ago before we went to bigger, more base on the streets, how we would have brand new subdivisions open up and within 10 years we were having to replace roads. So I I would defend that, uh, and our requirements to, uh, you know, as long as you wanted me to. As far as, uh, blasting, I think that, yes, whatever we can do to, uh, notify people to lessen the impact, I'd be for, uh, having cracks in basement and foundations is tacky. I know I've got some in mind and I'm sure it's not result of cracking. It's probably just a house has been around long enough. But, uh, whatever we can do going forward to, uh, keep the people apprised of when it, when and if there's going to be a blast and to control the ramifications of it, I would appreciate. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Gary Hertzberg.
Yeah. You you feel for these folks and I'm trying to think of, you know, I think Bill, you know, hit a number of things that, um, I only thought is on a notification and I thought we've talked about that in the past. We posted some on website today. And I'm not sure who can, who can go into that of how we do these notifications, but is there another way to, you know, another level of notification that might be uh, help some of the folks out?
Um, I could touch on a little bit along with Kevin too, but, um, I do know, uh, my understanding is that any residents interested in being on an email list that is, um, managed and allows for communications from Veridian and or the blasting company. I'm not exactly sure who sends those out. But they can be on that list. Also, uh, when they've already notified the village of the blasting plan, um, we use, um, WannaBlog, which people can subscribe to. Um, if you Google WannaBlog, you'll find it, but, um, people can sign up with their personal email address and they'll receive an email once daily with announcements on WannaBlog. Then we do allow, um, then we do utilize, um, Nextdoor and Facebook as well. Am I missing anything, Kevin?
No, I think that that that's a lot.
Okay. That's all I have, Chris.
Yeah, I wanna be very clear too. It just happened. I started with Dr. Random. I wasn't doing like the guys, then the girls. That's not it. Just to be clear, it's just how you guys are on my screen. Um, so next I have Erin actually on my screen. Go ahead, Erin.
Um, first of all, I guess thank you everyone for joining us in presenting tonight. Um, it's helpful to get some perspective from people. Um, I guess my first thing about the emails and your notification, Brian, maybe you checked this, like, are we are we fulfilling how we're supposed to be notifying people?
Well, well, I would say when it comes to our notification, there are no limits to what we can do. I mean, we can do whatever it is the village board wants. Um, I I I I don't, I I think that we are in in all of the communications that Todd and Kevin just identified. I'm sorry?
Is there like a minimum requirement?
No, not that I'm aware of. No, the notifications that are in the, for example, in the administrative code apply to the blasting operator. They don't apply to the village or a different municipality. The communications, I think that, um, Kevin and Todd were talking about are things that the village has instituted on its own to try to make residents aware.
Okay, the horn, the horn blasting is one of the state requirements.
Okay. Um, would we be allowed then to impose further like notification?
Well, there there is notification requirements that are within the the code. So so when I say code, I mean that SPS three oh seven, Wisconsin Administrative Code. Um, we can talk to the blasters and the developers to see if they're willing to do that, but we're not entitled to impose upon them greater notification requirements.
Um, okay, that's sorry, just going through my own notes. And then I guess a question for Olson and Veridian. So this, the houses that were in this, um, radius to start, were there any homes in Wanakee that were contacted and photos taken before this or didn't any? Do we know that?
Chris, I do wanna ask just in terms of process, are you, are you interested in having uh, folks from Veridian jump back in as needed to address some of the questions here now?
Only if they choose they want to and they should put their hand up so they know that you know, Todd, if they want to.
Well, yeah, they're right. They're right there on camera, so.
Okay. So, uh, Chris, I see you on camera now. So if you wanna comment, you know, just like wave your hands or something like this and I'll make sure that I call on you. Um, okay, Erin, any other comments or questions?
Um, I'm I'm just curious, like, how many houses were notified before? If we had any photos and, um, someone I mentioned, like, the developer can go extend the radius to more houses. So if that was the case, how far? Um, and then I just another question of the Vibrotech, if we have the same, if we've extended that, any of our own monitoring past what, um, we're obligated to. So.
Yeah, the vibe, I can answer the Vibrotech cannot defer to the DJ or Chris on the other. The Vibrotech is I can answer the VibraTech cannot defer to the DJ or Chris on the other. The VibraTech is something that's separate from the required blasting. That is something that we've implemented on the last couple subdivisions where it's an independent monitoring system. There's three of them out on this site. So separate, they have their own monitoring that's required by state law, then VibraTech has theirs out there as well. And they actually have put together a report and and I'm hoping to get that out to to the, you know, to the public and to the village board. Probably in the next week or two.
But those are all still on site, the additional. Okay, we were monitoring anything beyond. So I think that's what, you know, a lot of the comments are tonight, things that are beyond a lot of requirements. Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Next is Nyla, right? Nyla, you're still on mute. There you go.
Okay, my questions run along the lines of Aaron's questions and. I'm wondering, okay, you have a circumference or whatever of houses or people living. All from what, from a blast area. I'm wondering. Were they notified ahead of time that the pictures can be taken? And given this information? And if so, whose responsibility is it to notify the residents? And I also want to know what happens if there's a household that may not have internet email connection. I know that the, before the blasting started, they went through and I got a door hanger. But I'm wondering, beyond that. You know, how has the connections between the homeowners and the blasters been made? If if the homeowner didn't contact you, or I mean, how are they receiving their notifications? When when a blast is going to occur, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I I can take first crack at part of that answer if you'd like, Nyla.
Yes.
So the 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 blasting notification, so within the the SPS code provision. There's the formula that I talked about before that applies to, like, am I going to go take pre-blast surveys or pre-blast? Pre-blast pictures. That also applies to, you know, a notification. And so what the code says is. If you, if if you have a dwelling or a structure that falls within this, this formula, okay, so within, let's just say the the affected area. Then the blasting operator has an obligation to make reasonable efforts to contact you in writing or in person. And then if you fall within that, you know, affected area, they also need to contact you and ask you if you want to have these pre-blast surveys. So it is the, it's the blasting operator that has that obligation. If the dwelling or structure is within that affected area that using that formula that's in the code provision.
Thank you.
Anything else, Tyler, are you done?
Um, I just want to say that I understand about the blasting. I'm pretty close to it too. And. You know, I don't think there's probably a lot of solutions during, due to state regulation. And I really, really wish there was because I feel for all of those who were involved in this.
Okay, thank you. Kristin Rungy.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, I I'm with everyone else. I feel for everyone involved in this. Homeowners are, I lived in a subdivision. That was under construction for many years and there was blasting, but it doesn't sound like it was anywhere near. Our rock was not as as hard as as what's being experienced in this subdivision. So my heart goes out to everyone. So I had a question. It's come up a number of times and I just want to confirm. This is probably from you, Brian, that we cannot require a developer outside of that blast zone to take pictures. Or to document what things look like before or after. Is that, do I have that correct?
Correct. We we could negotiate with them and maybe they, and I agree with Kevin that I, my understanding and some of my research is there have been. Blasting operators or developers who are willing to take those pictures. You know, I guess they're probably thinking that it's a form of protection for themselves. I'm not suggesting that there's, you know, any of the claims are false here. But yeah, we 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 could only negotiate it. If they said no, we wouldn't be able to impose it upon them. And then we would just be left with the state guidelines.
Okay, and then within that blasting zone, it sounds like you have to opt in if they, they'll contact you. And then you have the opportunity to say, yes, you can come in, but that would have happened before the blasting.
Correct, yeah. The the we don't, the the blasting operator would not have the authority to essentially demand that those pictures be taken. That the property owner is the one that controls whether or not it would occur.
Dude, I'm wondering from the operators if they would know offhand how many people they contacted, how many, how many homes were actually in that circle? Because it is, and I'm trying to figure this out. And I was, my daughter's a geology, a geology major, and I was texting her, what is a K value? How does that work? So I'm trying to understand kind of how this all fits together. But how many, how many homes were in that blasting radius? And then, then kind of. What, do we have an idea from who we've heard from today, how many homes might be outside of that blasting radius? And might be experiencing what sounds like were really unexpected effects, like if this rock is that much harder, things travel that much farther. You know, that 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 this would, this seems, from what I'm hearing, it's 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 an unusual effect and it's really impacting people. Both these two things. So I don't, do you know, we know how many homes were notified?
I I don't myself.
Cool.
Kevin, you're on mute.
That was, I was waiting for DJ to see if he was gonna come in. I think he has the, he's done the calculations. And I don't believe there's any homes that would fall within that, within that, that, that circle.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, those are basically my questions. And then I just a comment too about the notifications that. I also had the same concern as Nyla. I know we talk a lot about going on social media to learn things. And I think we as a village are pretty good with using the village Facebook page. So if you're on social media and following that, you're getting the information. If you're on the village. If you're on social media and you're following Nextdoor, it's being posted there. So I feel like from my perspective as a communication person, like we're doing our due diligence. And then it's being notified other ways. If you're not on, you know, social media, there are other ways of finding out. And then I'm wondering with regards to communication is, because it seems that the the. One of the pain points is that these are so unexpected. You know, is there, if you don't have email, is there a way of finding out? If there's going to be a blast that day? Is there like a hotline that they can call? Is there some sort of sign that gets put up at the entrance to the construction site? Like a red flag or anything? Just curious about that.
DJ, do you want to try and answer that?
Yeah, go, go ahead, DJ. I was just, I've been taking notes of all the questions. I was just gonna start answering them one by one here. I was waiting for everybody to finish, so.
I've been doing the same, Chris. I have a list of of questions, so I'll I'll try to answer any as best I can.
Do you want us to go now or?
Okay, if if I have my comments to make still.
Go for it.
Once, once I'm done, then you guys can come in and and I may give you some more, who knows? Hopefully, I won't add too many to the list, but. I I just, I have to make a lot of comments in regards to this because where I see that there is a downfall. If we have a downfall in this whole setup we have within the village and blasting specifically in a new subdivision. When we started this subdivision, we went through public hearings, we went through the entire process over years. As this subdivision was going in. And I'm not trying to be defensive right now, to be very clear. I'm just trying to take you through the process and what was happening. And as we went through, we talked about where's water going to be stored? Where are the roads gonna look? What are the roads gonna look like? Are we gonna be able to match where Water Tower Park is? Are we gonna be able to keep that sledding hill? Are we gonna be able to allow for the road to go through? That we want to connect those things. Nowhere in there, other than talking about there was going to be some earth movement, did we discuss blasting? So one of the things I think that needs to absolutely happen is part of our process is when we have a new subdivision coming online. We need to make sure that blasting is discussed. When the developer is looking at this, as they stated earlier. They do soil borings to look and see what's underground. So they know if that rock is there. That would help us to know that the blasting is going to be occurring, so the residents would be there. To another point within that, in this entire process, and I'll apologize to Bruce Hoesley. I know, I've known Bruce for many years. And he was at a listening session that I had, and he brought up blasting. I don't think it was necessarily Veridian, but he brought it up. And I don't think we did a good enough job for him at that point, neither staff nor myself. But what I would say is that when we're discussing any new subdivision as they're coming in, we need to have this be part of the process. And the comments, Bruce was the only comment that I had directly come to me as an elected official. I can't speak to the other board members if you received anything, but no one else came to us with this concern with regards to Veridian's. Subdivision. And maybe that's our fault for not taking that into account and talking about blasting. Because I think it's important that knowing that the state really is governing this. We, we are not. Okay, Brian, I think made it very clear that we don't, we can't put restrictions on that are more stringent than what the states are. In those, in those statutes. So I will say that Diane Hasselbine and John Urbaback, if they haven't been called, they should be called by all of you. And I'm happy to call them on your behalf too. But I'd like you to have a conversation with me before I contact them. That's the important thing to understand is having the open communication. If you think that I'm intimidating to talk to, I'm not. I want to hear from you, whether it's an email. I prefer that you call me, frankly, because I'm going to be able to understand better than what an email text or something you put on Facebook. Potentially may be saying. So that is something I would reach out to the residents to say, I'm not being defensive. I'm just asking the question, why we didn't hear about this before? All right, and if staff heard about it, then I would ask staff, why didn't we hear about this? These comments are concerned before from the residents. So that's something important that needs to be taken care of within the process. All right. It's disappointing to me when I hear people say that they're gonna move because, you know, that this is happening. We've had other. Blasting that's occurred in our community. And knowing that, the people that are surrounding this, there's going to be. I believe damage that's gonna happen. Who's responsible for that damage? When I hear everybody talking, sure. Notifications are important for safety and other reasons. We have to have those notifications. But to me, the big concern here is what's happening for the damage? If there's damage to my home, who's gonna take care of it? Do I have to pay for it? Is somebody else responsible? Who's responsible? That's, that's what is on the minds of most people. Next is value of their homes. Is this impacting the value of my home? If I want to sell my home, okay, next, now the value of my home, but. Well, let me hold on a second. I got my notes here. So the value of their home is is one thing, but also then if they're going to sell that home. You know, what, what is it gonna mean for the future? 10 years from now, 15 years from now, everybody's house is settled. I mean, we know that. I mean, I have cracks in my house. You know, in the drywall too, and maybe it was the builder when he first put it in. I don't know. Maybe, maybe it was the train coming by. For people that live near trains, do they have this issue as well? Is there anything that limits that? Because I'm sure, well, Dr. Random, I think you live near a train. I mean, I'm sure that rumbles your house when a train comes through. And that, those things are all part of this. So where I'm going with this is is trying to understand what we can do. And I felt since I've had numerous conversations, both with the developer, with our attorneys, with Todd, a lot of different individuals going in. Looking at different statutes within the state, trying to get a better feel for this. And and the most difficult thing as as a local elected official is not having anything that we can really do. Other than we can ask for things to be done. We can't mandate things above and beyond. That, that's a problem in in my opinion. So that's something I want to take to my state legislators, legislators. You know, the the stronger than planned, I I mean, I don't know enough about this to answer that. DJ would be the ones to be talking about that are the blasting companies. Accountability for the developer, I think Dr. Random's. Comment was right on there with being a good neighbor to it. Important. There were some different comments by Mr. McPherson, you know, referring back to when we did the. Was it Northridge or Wanakee Heights? I didn't have a great deal of time. We got his information today, but and just looking at that and realizing what's right, what's not right with what's in there. I don't know. I haven't had a chance. Maybe Brian has to look at that, but I want to make sure that we're answering those questions as well. I think that's everything from, Brian, did I throw anything at you there?
Um, yeah, I just, I I guess a couple of things to kind of double back on that I saw and I took some notes. I mean, I think. You know, we we heard multiple people question about the 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 pre-blasting survey, and I know that that was part of the Northridge Estates. And again, that's something where, like you said, we can ask for it, but it's not something that we can mandate if it's outside the formula. That's identified within the code. I do, I I I agree with whatever, all the board members have said that they feel for folks. I I guess, you know, a couple of things that I think we can address, I think that we can address the safety issue regarding, you know, putting up potentially some fencing. So that kids don't go on the on the piles that they shouldn't. I agree, you know, internally, we can talk about communication issues. You know, I I know that, I I think I saw some written comments. I mean, we definitely have the ability to go back and take a look at our code. To see if there's anything that we can change. I, my my belief is at least with respect to the blasting, that we have everything that we can have in there. Because we're referring to the applicable state code provisions, which is important because then that gives us the power to also enforce them. I'm not sure if there's anything, you know, here where there's been a violation of, there would then have to be a violation of that code for the village to enforce it. But I think if if it's any benefit to any of the commenters, we do have language in our code right now where we would not be relying on the state to enforce it necessarily. And, yeah, and and, you know, we we have the same development agreement that we have with Veridian, that we have with all developers that indemnifies the village. In case there's damage to property as a result of the actions that are taken by the developer. You know, it's not the village that, you know, to the extent that that damages would have to be paid, the village is protected in that case.
Okay, Kevin, one of the questions, if if you don't mind, I mean, I I need to go to, maybe I need to go to Tim Herlitzco with this, but we obviously have things underground. Just like a residential foundation, maybe a little bit deeper, but we have our sanitary sewers and and water lines and all those things down there. Do those have an impact? Do those get impacted? Is there a way we can monitor those as well? Do you know of, or is that a question for Tim maybe?
I'd like to take some time to answer that, but you know, just off the top of my head, I don't think we've, we've experienced any damage to our water mains. Or our sanitary sewers. They're usually better and protected in terms of the the construction methods that would, you know, minimize any of that. And I can't really point to any, you know, anecdotal even where we've had more watering breaks. Or more, you know, maintenance issues because of they're in near rock. I, I haven't seen it, I guess, but you know, that's a good question. I can circle back with Tim on that.
All right, so with that, then. Chris, did you have any other comments you wanted to make, Chris Ellers? Since I'm done.
Sure, let me just go through a few of these. And and DJ, why don't I start with you about the notice? I I know, Nyla, you were, you were asked about people that that aren't using email or social media. Do you want to just talk about DJ? How texting and everything else we're doing to give notice to to anyone who would like it here?
Yep, gladly. So the, I believe it's Tracy Mine also at the village. She gets a notice the day before with a, about a four hour window. Because we run into, could be breakdowns or weather, you know, we hate to lock into a set specific timeframe, just on account of that. So she gets 24 hour notice. There's two other neighbors that have come on here most recently that get email as well a day before. And then the day of blasting, I have three people that I text within probably 30 to 60 minutes prior to each blast. They prefer more, you know, closer to the day. I try to do it, but sometimes that's difficult on our blast crew to take care of that. Because we have other notifications as well that go out, you know, shortly before that, we we notify Dane County Communications. Jim Madden is on that 30 to 60 minute notice. So it's a balancing act. We're happy to do both. It's just trying to get whoever. Some people don't have, I know one of them is a, I believe Linda Ziegler. She prefers text because she doesn't have a computer to look at at things online. So those notices all have been done. If you want me to touch base, Chris, on. Notices prior to, there was 17 different residences and or businesses reached out to. 15 were talked to in person, two did have door flyers, and that's after multiple attempts. And those, going back to what Brian said on the distance, two things, everything we've done, nobody had to be notified by state. We we like to go above and beyond. Open communication makes our job go smoother from the start.
Okay, and then, you know, is, again, part of the, was. You know, is, again, part of the was eye opening to me and, and, and. Started about two weeks ago when I went out there. On a Monday and saw the tracks going around our fence and up the hill and one slide down the hill. Back into the fence. So it couldn't have been a fun sled ride for whoever did that, but it also opened my eyes that. We will enclose the entire site with a fence. So we've called that in. It's happening as soon as, is, is the. Weather gets a little bit warmer or even, you know, we're making sure that they can go out there and just drive stakes. And surround the entire site. We were not anticipating people going around the fence. Onto the, to Brian's property and coming into this area. So that was eye opening. We're also going to put up no trespassing signs. A light that'll, a motion sensor light and a video camera. On all of this, we're going to have a limited access point just for the trucks that will be hauling the stone. So it'll be very controlled, safe, accessible area. Again, uh, was, was, there's plenty of steep areas to sled. We are not anticipating someone actually venturing all the way up. To the top of the, the stone pile. So we are going to address that. That being said, just keep in mind again to all of the neighbors that it is the entire Brining farm is private property. It is a construction site. Whether it's close or near and probably should stay off it. Just, just to be safe. You know, that's what DJ does. He has a process. He drives the entire site to. You know, just look for people and tell people, please stay off before we do a blast. But even as we get further north and there's, there's a little more construction activity, we just encourage everybody. To just hang back and hang off that site until we're done and until we have. Fully finished product and, and houses and parks and everything else and streets for that matter. Chris, we also have underground utilities that are even closer proximity to where the blasts are going. It's, it's something that we monitor. Everything is, is, is safe and sound. Again, it's, it's just, it's, it's meant to handle. What it's doing. The vibration isn't that bad to it. We will also be building houses. Directly abutting Quincy Ridge will be building houses all around the site. We fully disclose this. We've done it before. This might be new to everybody in Wanakee, but we've, we are currently doing it. In Sun Prairie and in Madison and potentially on the west side of Madison as well. This is more common than, than I think people realize that this, this practice takes place. You have to fully disclose that there, there is some coring activity nearby. But again, the way that everything is constructed and regulated, it's meant to protect houses that are, are nearby. We originally had budgeted to. Extract and blast enough stone to build all of the roadways in heritage. If I'd stuck to that schedule, it would, we'd be well into June. If, if we did that, I, I heard what everybody was saying. We, we wanted to. Decrease. You know, what's going on and try to end this as quickly as possible. So we are only going through the end of March just to get our park site cleared. That's only going to leave us enough stone for about 60 to 70% of the roads, but that's, you know, we'll just, we'll, we'll pay for the rest when we get there. So that's kind of the concession that. Veridian is making here. They are going to stop the original, what was planned to be the original extraction. Operation early here. And then one of the earlier questions about the size of the blast. Originally, we started out with a bigger blast and DJ, you can. Talk a little bit more about this. We did receive initial feedback. So we, we are actually paying more to. Have smaller blasts, more centralized blasts strategically located. Am I correct with that?
Somewhat, Chris. We, we've made design changes. So one thing we have to be careful of is, is you could blast 200 holes or 50 holes and your pounds per delay being detonated for eight millisecond window. Can dictate that. I mean, the smaller number of holes with more pounds could, could increase vibration versus 200. So. In the process, we've decreased our, our burden, which is the amount of rock for each row to push. You kind of slice it off like you're slicing. Cheese off and it's done in rows. So right now we're designing three row shots and. We decrease the burden. We've also went to. Instead of a conventional pyrotechnic detonator, that's a. Has a little bit of cap scatter, like they say, an eight millisecond window because it has a couple percent of milliseconds either way. We've introduced digital electronic detonators. So they're the latest thing on the market. They're, they're. They are more costly, but they've reduced our vibration significantly because they're exact. Typically in this type of blasting, they're not, not warranted. In the case we run into with, I think Kristen touched earlier and I'll get circle around to K factor. This is higher than usual for. This type of limestone in Wisconsin or experiencing there, but it, and I also want to touch on another point. If you don't mind, Chris. One of the comments was several blasts had, had gone. Other than plan, that's incorrect. Everything has went very well. We are. Most of my three man staff out there has a average of seven years experience between the three of them, and that's without me being there. They, everything has gone as planned. It's just the, the orientation one day and high K factor, our vibration was higher than predicted, but nothing has been. Out of the ordinary for what was planned is just the prediction was lower than what it came in.
Okay, and then the last thing, just circling back to Chris, what, what you said, when we were initially going through all, you know, the various approval process. It, it was briefly mentioned, but it wasn't focused on. Everybody was focused on Division Street, like you said, and, and, and stormwater. Going forward, I have no problem as, as we submit each phase or each plat for approval of, of developing some kind of Q and A. Or strategic plan. So we'll jump out ahead a little bit and, and do soil testing. Try to identify where we might have a, a strategic blasting pattern if needed. I, I don't see it coming in, in the next few phases. But as we get further north, it's something I have no problem doing and then presenting to everybody well in advance. So we can kind of set the expectation way upfront for this.
Perfect. Thank you guys for your comments there and, and clearing some of those things up. We appreciate it.
Chris, would you mind if I add one more?
Who's that?
This is DJ Chris.
Okay, go ahead.
Chris Sellers, you mind if I add one more topic?
Sure.
Just wanted to point out, in addition to the Vibra Tech monitors that are out there, there's three permanent. Seismographs placed by Vibra Tech. As complaints have came in, right now we're running three additional of our own portable. To monitor. I mean, we have one that's literally 200 feet beyond the, the Capital Drive one at eight 11 Lexington. We have another one that's a few hundred feet to the east of that one. It's in. The burning property, but it's on the backside of eight 16. Then we have another one up at nine 26 Lexington. I believe it's Michelle Baldwin. And that's, she's around 2,000 feet from the blast. So we're, we're monitoring additionally than what you guys are requiring just to, we want to know how things are reacting as well.
So I'm, I'm, I want to thank you guys for being here again tonight, coming and doing the presentation. I think you heard from the residents, there's, there, there are concerns and it's important. I think I'll speak for all the board here and if, if, if you disagree, please speak up, but that you. Do encounter and make sure that you are that good neighbor to the folks that are, are on this call tonight and making sure that they're informed about as we go through. And Chris, thank you for saying in the future that you're going to look at. And make sure that the residents up there are notified as you go through with any potential, any more potential blasting as you go north. So they're, they're ahead of it. So they know what's coming and, and how it's going to be done. So I appreciate that. Bill, you put your hand up. So you must have disagreed with me.
No, no disagreement. I'm just piling on maybe the, the claims process. How does that go? Do they have an idea what will happen there?
Yeah, actually, under your guys' permitting, we had to have a policy in place of how we handle complaints. And that is, we go out and we'll meet with the homeowner. This year with COVID has been a little different than most times. But we do meet with them and investigate it and then. You know, if they have something that's legitimate, we, it is on us. Typically, we do not get down that road too far. I mean, I, I understand the home is everybody's largest investment. Mine. You know, I'm concerned about mine as well if this was happening, but I'm. It's just, we'll, we'll address it.
Nyla?
How do you determine what is a legitimate? Happening or, you know, how, how is that determined? You know, if someone has a cracked basement wall.
A complaint, Nyla?
Yes.
I, I listen to everyone. I mean, I'll, I'll take any phone calls, emails and follow up. I try to within a. At least in a phone conversation within a day. Sometimes I can't get there in person for a couple of days.
Nyla, can I expand on what you're asking? I, I think, I don't think I got your, you got your question. I think what she's asking is if somebody has damage. And they feel it was a result of this. What is the process for those folks to take, to take that concern to you and what are the possible rectifications? Is it, you guys are going to take care of it or do they have to take it? That's kind of what people are, are, are wanting.
So how that's handled, you all right with me? Continue, Chris?
Yes, go ahead. Other Chris, go ahead.
How that's handled is we, we do go out and investigate it and we do compile the records. And it is, it starts in the insurance, their insurance at that point. And we've. And from there it continues, you know, between their insurance and our insurance. So it's basically a phone call for them to their insurance company.
Okay, Nyla, did that answer your question?
No, I guess, I guess I'm more confused because. Many people wouldn't go to their insurance company because of. Depending, depending on the extent, how extensive the work or the need is. Because they have deductibles, et cetera, et cetera, and they just feel that they're just not going to enter into it. Because it would probably be a long, complex. Situation and how do they have time for it? That's just my comment.
So yeah, I, I don't want to put those guys in a, in a bad spot with the questions, but I would assume Nyla that the insurance company, if you contact your insurance company. They're going to contact Veridian. Veridian is going to let their insurance company handle it with, so the two insurance companies really are going to handle it. To get it taken care of and decided on what's going to happen. Is that fair to say, guys?
It really is. It's, it's a case by case basis. There's often times where. There's, there's other factors, drainage or, or something else too that can cause the cracking. So.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. So the insurance companies would really be the ones to investigate it and take it because they're the ones that are going to be paying. So they're going to want to know. They're going to look into it. Short answer. And of course, there's always going to be extenuating circumstances. So. Okay, Bill, did you have your hand up again?
Well, it just seems a little shifty to me, but maybe that explains the, maybe the insurance companies can depend, defend it. Not everybody is capable of. You know, explain the circumstances and I feel like they're, again, back to the good neighbor thing. It seems like you should be. In there helping it out, not putting it on the guy that it happened to. I mean, it wouldn't happen in a car crash. If you caused the car crash, you wouldn't sit there and say, hey, it's not my responsibility.
Okay, alright, so any other questions or comments from any of the board members? Did you have all of your other? Questions that you posed answered by either Brian, Kevin, Chris, anyone? Okay, I don't see any. So thank you again for everybody who came into Todd's putting his hand up, but.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, Chris, if we could, that those who are on here watching, who they should be contacting and when. I will say that any, any question can by all means be directed to the village. The ma- the main email address for the administrator's office is pretty easy, administrator@wannakee.com. That'll get to the right person. It's always a place where you can start. It, it probably isn't the place where you'd end, but we can definitely get you to the right place. The main village hall phone number is eight five zero, eight five zero zero. And we'll, again, be sure to get you to the right place. Another easy option from our website, wannakee.com. Right in the middle of the screen, when you get to that first page, there's a, a thing that says ask anything wannakee. It is absolutely simple. You click the link, you, you put in your name and contact info. And, or you know, an email for response and put in a question about anything literally. And we will get that to the right person to be addressed. So those are some ways to connect with the village. Chris and DJ, do you have, would you like to just share for purposes of the folks watching and the recording? How best people can get ahold of you guys? Chris Sellers? Okay.
Directed towards DJ, who's managing this. DJ, do you want to share?
Yep, my contact information should be on the website on the wannablog. Couple other sites as well. I'll gladly share it right now if anybody. Is listening would like my, my phone number. Is six zero eight. Seven, seven, eight. Eight, four, three, zero. Again, all that information should be on record with the village. I, I've, I've been able to look on the wannablog and some other places and find it.
Okay, so again, thank you everybody for, you know, sharing information as well as all the questions that have been raised. I would also mention that all of your board members have emails. If you go to that Wanakee site, our Wanakee Village website, our emails are there. And we invite you to reach out anytime to us with your comments or questions. So. Thank you, everybody for participating in this public hearing tonight. Okay. We're doing pretty good. We're only two hours in. Everybody excited? Everybody still vibrant and? Alright. Let's, uh, let's move on. Brian, you're probably going to win your bet about how, what, what time we were going to be done tonight. So next, under new business, we have presentation discussion on rules and regulations applicable to blasting and non metallic mining. So I had asked Brian if he would come on here to talk about process. Within the village and what we can do. So he's going to give a, a little bit of a, a talk in, in regards to process, not about any specific mines. Mind you, it's just. Process of what the village board and how, how the process for mining, non metallic mining, all of that works within the state. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, and, and you know, the item says for blasting too, but I think we've, I don't have anything in addition to add to what the discussion was on the previous agenda item. So I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that may pop up, but I was going to jump right into the non metallic mining. And you know, I think for purposes of the village and consideration for village residents, you really have to look at the non metallic mining within, you know, kind of three different areas. Because it has the potential to affect us. And one is, so we have adjacent towns to us. And so I'm not going to talk about Westport right now, but all the other adjacent towns. If there's mining activities in those towns, the, the village does not have jurisdiction, does not have authority to dictate what would happen with those. And I think, you know, we need to keep that in mind. When it comes to Westport, we do have at least a portion of Westport is in our extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. And so I know some comments that we heard tonight on the previous agenda item, and I know I've seen some written comments. That has asked the village to kind of take a, a look at its non metallic mining ordinance. It is a pretty old ordinance. We certainly can do that. And, and as we're looking at the non metallic mining ordinance, we also, if, if, if the village board. Wants staff to do that and it doesn't take a vote, it just takes a nod, you know, we can certainly contact Tom Wilson and, and to the extent necessary. You know, sit down and see if there's any, you know, and, and any steps that should be taken within the extraterritorial zoning area. Now we, we get to the village itself. And so we regulate non metallic mining in two ways. One is we have section twenty six dash eighty nine of our code, which is permitting for non metallic mining. So if somebody wants to operate a non metallic mine in the village, they need to get a permit. The other way that we regulate it is through zoning. So there is no zoning district in the village of Wanakee. That allows non metallic mining as a permitted use. There is only one zoning district that allows it as a conditional use. And that is the A1 agricultural district. We, in anticipation of this meeting, we did, Tracy and Kevin looked and, and identified a certain properties in the village are zoned A1. We don't really have a concern at all that any of these properties would be you that will see a, a conditionally used permit application for mining purposes. Because there's a belief that there's just not good minerals for purposes of mining under these properties. But that's something that we can look at too. Is there a way that we can? I mean, my personal opinion would be, I can't imagine any property within the village that would be appropriate for non metallic mining. In light of the comments that one of the gentlemen made during the public hearing, we're, we're largely urban and residential right now. But tha- that's one of the issues that we can look at. When it comes to regulating non metallic mining. We're in a similar position that we are with blasting. In other words, there are state codes and state regulations that govern non metallic mining. And, and that's as far as we can go. But one of the things that we can do, and I think would make sense if you want us to do it is. As opposed to the code provision that I talked about a lot for blasting, where essentially everything for blasting is contained in that one SPS three oh seven. The rules and regulations that apply to non-metallic mining are spread out more in into different code provisions. Including environmental code provisions by the natural Department of Natural Resources. And I know that was another one of the comments made by one of the speakers during the public hearing is. You know, to the extent that we can to make sure that village property is not environmentally negatively impacted by the activity. And so. You know, again, the statute, I quoted a statute before for blasting, it applies to non non-metallic mining also. Talks about that rules need to be established, that that set uniform limits for the non-metallic mining. It just so happens that there's more, there's more state agencies than Department of Safety and Professional Services. That have rules and regulations that govern non-metallic mining. So I I think really, to me, it kind of comes down to. That, you know, the the time and expense that the village, you know, would want to put into this. If you know that there's probably a strong likelihood that in fact, no land within the village is gonna be used for this purpose. I mean, to me, that's kind of the the cost benefit analysis to go through. As to whether or not you want kind of a substantial audit of the existing provisions within our code. The other thing that I would touch on that I think is related to both of these issues. You know, not specifically within the code, but we've heard comments, and I know you mentioned it, Chris, as part of your comments. People concerned about, you know, the impact on their properties. And I'm I'm not here to tell any property owner whether or not they need to identify on the real estate condition report. You know, blasting activities or non-metallic mining activities. But I I I think I've have seen some comments, and I know, I think, Chris, you've commented on this of. Is there anything that the village can do on a on a proactive basis? That would essentially try to inform future property owners of, you know, activities that are going on in the village. And I I, you know, we we have the ability to use our website if we need to. But, for example, we can't, you know, we can't require a property owner, for example, to record something on their property that says, hey. I live within a half mile of a of a quarry, or I live within a certain, you know. I'm gonna put my home up for sale, and I know that there's a new residential subdivision that's gonna go up, and they may be blasting. So I'm 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 gonna put that on, you know, either in within the real estate condition report, or it's somehow gonna be, you know, noticed on the property. We just don't have that authority with one exception, I would say, and we actually just did this recently. If we catch something right on the front end, and we did this with Arboretum Village. Where as part of the development agreement that we executed. With the LLC, there were certain homes that are abutting the industrial park. And we wanted to make sure that before those homes were built and when those lots were created. That there was a notice placed on the property to inform any purchaser. That the 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 home that they would be buying or constructing here is gonna be located near the industrial park. So there are rare circumstances where we can be proactive. But for existing properties, we we wouldn't be in a position to require something like that.
Any comments, Brian, in regards to process from who who oversees? Mining, does the village board have any any powers or anything that we can do? As something comes up within a zoning board or. Our zoning administrator, if they're making decisions, does the board weigh in on any of those topics? Or is the state statutes pretty much prohibit us from doing that?
Well, I I guess I want to answer that. I mean, the the next agenda item, I'm gonna get into some process specifically related to the the. Where I can only have a very limited discussion. When it comes to other non-metallic mining activities. I would say we are involved from the standpoint of we have a permitting process in place. And so if somebody did want to operate a non-metallic mine within the village itself. They would have to follow that process. First, they'd have to get a conditional use permit if they were in the appropriate. A1 zoning. And if if that conditional use permit were granted, then they would, there would also be permitting. Now, the other thing I would say is. Again, I don't anticipate to this to happen within the village. But as part of that conditional use permit process, if the village, and that that's something that goes to the plan commission. We would have the authority to maybe try to impose, if if we believe there were reasonable regulations. You know, as as an example, when when towns are, you know. I've talked to a few town attorneys related to non-metallic mining. And when their focus is not necessarily to prevent the metallic mining when it occurs. But if they are going, if it's a conditional use permit process, some of the things that they're gonna focus on as conditions of of the permit are. Hours of operation. What's the impact that your trucks are gonna have on our roads? And are you gonna be able to make sure that you do not damage our roads? And if you do, how are you gonna pay us back? A lighting issue, dust issue, things like that. If we ever got to the point where we had that conditional use permit process, those, the same issues that towns get at. And when they're approving some type of mining, the village would have the ability to do that. I just kind of want to double back and say I don't anticipate that that's gonna happen in light of the uses in the village.
Okay, board members, any questions for Brian in regards to this? Please raise your hand if you have any questions. Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the next topic, which is presentation discussion on prior zoning procedure related to Quincy Ridge property.
So my understanding is that, I guess, our top, my discussion on this is gonna be extremely limited. I just want to talk about process. This is a matter that is currently in Dane County Circuit Court. It's it's never appropriate to discuss the substance of a lawsuit when it's ongoing. But I do want to provide a little bit of background from a process standpoint as to how we got to this point. And actually, it's 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 really straightforward. And so because we have a zoning code by Wisconsin statute. The village is required to have what's called a zoning board of appeals, and we do have a zoning board of appeals. And the powers that are given to the zoning board of appeals are by Wisconsin statute. We do not, as a village, have the ability to amend the powers, except with one exception. There are certain municipalities where conditional use permits go to the zoning board of appeals as opposed to the plan commission. Municipalities do have the ability to say, no, we want the conditional use permits to go to a plan commission instead of a zoning board of appeals. That's what we've done as the village, but that's the only way that we can effectively impact the power of the zoning board of appeals. So the two primary matters that end up before the zoning board of appeals are. If somebody is requesting a variance for their property, whether it's an area variance, like a setback. Or if it's a use variance, I'm in a particular zoning district, I can't use my property for a particular use. But I want to seek a variance to see if I can do it. That those are ones, that's one circumstance. The other is where within our code and just within kind of a standard practice. Property owners have the ability to come to a municipality and come to the zoning administrator and ask questions about how their property can be used. If 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 they find it to be unclear within the code. And so one, one of the other ways that the zoning board of appeals gets involved is if. I'm a property owner and I ask a question to the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator comes back and says. You know, let's say, gives me the answer that I do not want to hear. Based on the zoning administrator's interpretation and application of our zoning code. The property owner has the ability to appeal that decision to the zoning board of appeals. And in fact, anybody who is able to demonstrate that they're aggrieved by an administrative opinion. Issued by a zoning administrator has the ability to appeal that decision to the zoning board of appeals. And that that's effectively what happened with Quincy Ridge. A request was made. The reason why the village of Wannakee zoning administrator handled the request. Is because the Quincy Ridge Quarry is in our extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. That's the only power that the village has over that property. All other ordinances and rules and regulations that would apply would be based on the town of Westport. But because it's in the ETG ETZ, the the zoning question comes to the zoning administrator. Zoning administrator issued his opinion. And the adjacent property owner appealed that decision to the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, within our village code, I'm just gonna read one section to you. It's section one thirty three dash forty three. It's entitled zoning administrator. It states, "The duty of the zoning administrator shall be to interpret and administer this chapter. And to issue after onsite inspection all permits required by this chapter." So that's the process that led up, and I can't get into the substance at all of what, you know, what was argued at the zoning board of appeals. Or what the arguments are at the Dane County Circuit Court. I have, I have heard, or I've seen, I I think it might have been in letters to the editor, I'm not sure. Questions from residents as to why the village board did not, you know, play a role in this process. And I can tell you that it, I I I don't believe that the village board legally could play a role in this process. Again, this is a decision that is to be made by statute by the zoning board of appeals. It is not a decision to be made by the village board. And quite frankly, had the village board gotten involved in this process and tried to. Impact the decision, whether it was the decision made by the zoning administrator or by the zoning board of appeals. In my opinion, that would have led to a pretty easily appealable issue by whatever party lost at the zoning board of appeals. Because they would be able to argue that the village board tried to impermissibly influence the decision, whether it was by the zoning administrator or by the zoning board of appeal. So, you know, that's that's a little bit more specific process related to that. That property, the comments that I made on the previous agenda item are more just general comments regarding process. For other possible non-metallic mining activities in and around the village.
All right, thanks, Brian. Comments or questions in regards to this by any of the board members? Please raise your hand. Brian, thank you for just clarifying that. I think it's important for the public to understand what the process is in these situations. Because it's not something that your everyday citizen knows is the process. So I think it's important that you pointed it out. So I appreciate that. Okay, that one was, I mean, I think we got done in ten minutes with both of those, so we're we're flying along now. So we'll move move into the next spot. Next, we have. Discussion, discussion update regarding COVID nineteen. Todd, you're still there, right?
I am. Should we first give applause to Scott Russell for still being here?
Oh, there he is.
Hey, how you guys doing?
So I, you know, I always like turning this one over to our resident experts here with with Doc Random and and Scott Russell. So Scott, why don't you go first and then Bill, share your wisdom after that.
Thanks, Todd. So you guys all saw the updates Todd sent out as far as what's going on at the county. Level here locally, we're kind of following the same trends. We're definitely seeing a downward trend as far as that bell curve goes. But the biggest concern here is making sure people don't get complacent. There's a reason that we're seeing this downward trend. Everything they have in place is working. And my biggest concern is if we start letting up, are we gonna start trending back upwards again? Guess the vaccines are starting to come out. They are coming out slower than expected and slower than hoped. So while there is an end in sight, I think it's gonna be a little bit farther off yet. So I guess from our end, we're just begging people to stay diligent, keep the masks on. Look at the new. Guidelines in place now for masking, wearing those those double layer masks. Making sure they fit properly, those types of things. If you're not familiar with it, go onto Madison Dane County Public Health Site. Definitely get yourself familiarized with it. The other big message is if you do fall into the one A or one B category, also log on to the public health site. And get yourself enrolled or call your primary physician, go on to your MyChart. Get ahold of somebody somewhere. If nobody's reached out to you yet, to get yourself in line to be able to get one of these vaccines. I can say from a a department standpoint over EMS. It has actually been a very long time since we've seen any COVID positives getting transported in. I can't speak to the actual brick and mortar healthcare. I'll let Doc Random kind of speak a little bit more to that. But we just haven't been seeing it in the field as much, which which is a great thing for us. Like I said, we're just hoping that this downward trend can continue. And quite honestly, it's it's really a testament to everybody out there listening as to how well you guys are doing and taking this thing seriously. So I thank you all again for that, and I think I'll see if Dr. Random has anything else to add right now.
Oh, thanks, Scott. I gotta say the same things. The, I think people are doing a really good job. With the prevention, and it probably can't stop till everybody's had their opportunities to get vaccinated. I think there'll be. We, the MyCharts basically have the. The information that, and there are certain people that don't have access to that. But they, it's been, our system has been sort of a call in and get yourself on the list, and that's been quite effective of late. It's a little rough to start with, but the really, the number of vaccinations gone up significantly in the high risk group. That's probably why they're not as busy at the hospital and the double coverage. So, very happy this, last week was the first week that I was at the hospital and did not have somebody in with specifically COVID, so. We have all the post-COVID stuff, but, you know, no new COVID, so.
Take what you can get.
Take what you can get, thanks.
That's great to hear. So I I think I heard you say it, but if somebody doesn't have a cellphone and they don't have internet. And they can't get to MyChart, how do we, how what should they do?
That's where Scott's correct. You call your office and all, there's basically all the systems that I know of have a triage number. That will get you to there. So I think the Dean one, I know it by heart now, is two five zero one two two two. I mean, it's it's two six zero, I'm sorry. So one, two, two, two. Everybody, this number is known by everybody in the building. I mean, because that is the number we're getting the most calls about, like, how do I get set up? So I would, again, I would tell everybody to look online. Or or call the, like Scott said, call the office, but most time that number, there's a whole group, a whole bank of reception people. In all the systems that I know that are trying to get you on that schedule.
And then there's also to kind of add to that, Doc, there's also a number for the Align Energy Center and Public Health to get onto their list as well. I believe it's on the the village website, but I'll double check that in the morning to make sure it is up on the COVID section of that.
Yeah, that's correct.
So maybe somebody from our local paper could put something in there too. Maybe they could reach out to you, Dr. Random, or you, Scott, and and something can go on there to to get those residents that don't have the internet. And get them the information of what to do. So thank you, guys, for all you're doing and appreciate the updates. Okay, next we have discussion and up, by the way, I'm sorry, did anybody else have any questions on that topic? I should have just cut it off.
All right, I would only add that I know Scott is still helping staff here work through some of our vaccinations, so that is still ongoing.
Perfect. Thank you, Todd. Next, we have discussion and update on diversity, equity and inclusion. Todd?
Yeah, I just want to share one thing tonight, and that's that the community learning project is, those details are coming together. I'm just gonna share my screen here real quick. So this is the, this is the project. I I think you can see a Word document here titled Community Learning Project, right? Thumbs up, Chris. Okay, good. So the book that we're gonna be reviewing is called The White Racial Frame. More important in the book, though, as I've said before, is going to be the discussions that occur with the small groups and the breakout groups of the. Hopefully, two hundred citizens that we have participate, two hundred community members. So this invite, schedule wise, is gonna be going out. Here I am announcing some details tonight. And over the course of this week, as you can see, we're going to be sending out the folks listed, by the way, or Lisa. Humanic from Monarchy Neighborhood Connection and Tim Shell from the Wannakee School District. So we're gonna be promoting participation in this link up here. Which will allow people to jump on and register with some very basic information. So the project is scheduled to be starting March thirtieth. Now, a couple of things we just have to totally firm up. I can tell you for sure that we're talking about Tuesday evenings. From six thirty to eight PM for a series of six weeks. There's gonna be a one week break in there. Particularly between a time when there's a heavier period of reading from one session to the next. But that's that's in general what it's gonna be looking like. We understand Tuesdays aren't gonna be perfect for everybody. I would say we do want to really urge that folks who choose to participate. Really make a serious commitment, a serious commitment. And, you know, we'd say, if you certain certainly know you will miss one meeting, that's okay. But if you're gonna be missing more than two or more, it'd be best to wait for another opportunity to participate. But we're looking forward to getting groups engaged. And this link is gonna be out there in the next couple of days, and we look forward to putting the teams together, putting the team together for learning.
Thanks, Todd. Okay, board members, any questions for Todd about that? And getting signed up, it's on Tuesdays. Is there any conflict, Todd, for committee at all for any of the board members that are participating?
You know, there's gonna be one here or there. I will tell you that the CDA, the only CDA meeting during this span is going to be on that one break week. So that's that actually ended up being kind of a fluke, but it won't impact the CDA. You know, I would say. To the extent that we can be flexible with other meetings. If we can make an adjustment to another meeting to accommodate this learning project. I would, you know, I would ask that we consider it. I know the school district, Tim Shell, mentioned that their diversity committee. Meets on these evenings, and he he feels that they would work to adjust their meeting time so as to not limit participation in this. So. that they would work to adjust their meeting times so as to not limit participation in this. So
Okay.
We did realize that no matter what night we picked, it was going to be tricky. Yep.
Sounds good. All right. Appreciate it, Todd. All right. Does anybody need a break? Quick break? Anybody? If you need one, we should take one because we're going to have some time now again. Anybody? All right. Keep plugging along. Everybody's good. All right. Let's do it. Um, next we have discussing take action on policy for use of TIF affordable housing extension funds and creation of one key housing betterment program. Go ahead, Todd.
Okay, um, I do want to, I gotta send a quick text, uh, to Nicole Solheim because she's going to be joining us. I made a mistake of not sending it more quickly. Okay, she'll be here shortly. Um, and Jason Valerius is here as well, who I, I sought some feedback from, uh, as I worked to put this together. Now let me, let me sort of jump in by saying, um, I, I saw the, the, the letter from, um, Robert McPherson. I heard the comments earlier. I want to, I want to push back a little bit and say, to say that this isn't supporting, um, or advancing affordable housing is just not a fair statement because we don't have anything right now. We don't have anything. We don't have a program. And this is a step. This is a start. And I'm not going to sit here and tell you that what I showed you right here today is a perfect solution. I think a perfect solution is going to be one that, um, we're going to watch evolve over time and our experience will lead us towards something that's going to work better and better, um, over time. So this is, I, I just, I guess, want to lay that out there that, that this is a start and it's really important that we do that, that we start. So the program and I also want to say that there, there are a couple of comments from Robert were, frankly, we're, are dead on correct. And I think, I think we can make some changes over time. For example, um, the comment about, um, maybe 10 to 10%, uh, 10% being too much of a limitation for smaller development projects. I bounced that conversation off of Jason and Nicole. And there, there is some agreement that, um, that modifying that at, at some point will probably be reasonable to look at a different style of project. I want to be true, I want to straightforward. We don't, that project isn't in hand right now. Very honestly, I was, there, there was an element of understanding the Cohen Esri project that guided my effort in putting something on paper for us to take today to work on. So that's just some, you know, a little bit of background, obviously to go back to, and this is to your packet, starting at page 40. Those three questions in front of us to be answered. Uh, one you've already answered, which is should we extend to, to and utilize the housing extension? You said yes. That brings us to how should we implement that? And that's what, over the past two weeks, I've performed research and put together this proposal to help us attempt to answer that second question. So that's this item right here, right now. I include, I'm not going to go through all this, but I included in your, in your packet, some information from a handful of different cities who have incorporated a number of projects. One thing I did find is that very few communities have a, have sort of landed a, a mother load of, of funding from this program at this point. And they've really been able to do little things, not significant things. There's, if there is a trend, it's been communities that have incorporated some projects to do single family, uh, 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 single family or duplex properties with some basic, um, improvements, facade improvement, maybe some code improvements, um, to bring up existing housing stock, sometimes in very defined neighborhoods within those communities. So if there is a common theme, I saw that. I'd like to think that we're, the, our village board is going to be suggesting that our CDA take steps beyond this first iteration of a policy and suggest some other things that might relate to programs like that, that, that would perhaps make a lot of sense. It makes a lot of sense to me that we consider that in the future. Um, but as far as something perfect to take, take in this case, a Litech product and its limitations and constraints, and then put some sort of, um, uh, metrics or parameters to how to, uh, provide an award, that information just wasn't there. I, I was, in a lot of ways, this is shooting in the dark and, and we, as I said in the memo, are trailblazing. And frankly, I'm glad we are. So with that said, what I proposed in front of you is this one key housing betterment program. Maybe you'll think that that name is dumb and you might have a better idea for what we call it in the future. That's fine. I take no ownership pride. Um, nor do I take pride in the program that I'm suggesting, which is a 50% forgivable loan award. Now, um, I did read in Robert's letter, um, can I request some question to the approach of the, to this as a loan program? There's, um, there's some very real information and I might ask Nicole to jump in right away. That suggests that, um, loan is, loan programs are kind of the, sort of the industry, the industry way to go for a couple of reasons. Um, Nicole, would you be willing to, um, chime in on that?
Sure. Um, you know, the alternative in terms of having grants to a project does have some implications for tax credit projects in particular and how that is handled for what we call the, the basis of the project and how you calculate tax credits. There are also tax implications for, you know, accepting grants, um, on these types of projects. And then of course, from the, the perspective of whoever is, um, giving the funding, in this case, the village, um, it's generally, you know, desirable to at some point receive at least a portion of those funds back. So you can revolve it into another project. So, um, a lot of the soft funding, uh, that we see on projects, you know, from Dane County, Madison, other communities, even the state, um, uh, are structured as loans, a portion of that may be eventually forgiven. Um, like what is being proposed here, but a lot of them are loans, both from a, for a perspective from taxes and the deal structure, and then also again, wanting to, um, be able to fund future projects.
I know Nicole, you shared with me that we might not actually be surprised that in the, e- even if we create a 50% loan award that the tax status for these projects, we might not be surprised to see the entire amount get loaned back, even if we don't require it.
Yes, that, that is sometimes the, the case.
And that depends on, as I've come to learn in, in the short span here, that, um, the situation of debt restructuring 15 years from now could be very unique. And sometimes there's an element of a nonprofit involved in that, um, in that process. And that's where this full repayment can make some pretty serious sense. So anyway, that's why, um, sticking with this loan element does make a lot of sense. I've laid out, um, five bullets here. You know, the, if there's anything that maybe we can, um, veer on right now. Again, thanks to the point that Robert brought up in his letter, that perhaps the 10% of project cost shouldn't be something we stick in as an absolute, but rather something that we identify as a matter of guidance. I don't know, Nicole or Jason, if you, both of you thought that maybe there is some room to wiggle in there. Do either of you want to chime in?
Yeah. I mean, I think in these large projects like, um, Cohen Esri, the 10% uh, makes sense. And I think that they would easily be under that. But for those smaller projects, as was mentioned, that's a really good point, especially for projects that don't have access to as many other gap financing sources. And that 10% can really, um, sneak up on you pretty quickly. Um, that might be something that, as Todd mentioned, is guidance. Where, um, you know, a specific applicant can come back to a committee or to the board, um, with a request to exceed that, that guidance.
Okay, good. Thank you. Jason, did you want, have anything to add?
I just like that it gives you a little flexibility there to, uh, say yes, if you're compelled to say yes and be able to say no and hold the line if, if it looks like a larger project where you, you really need to want to reserve the funds.
Okay. Um, I would add that I did bounce this criteria off of the village attorney. He had some advice, which was incorporated, um, included other staff. I also, uh, shared it with Kristen. So she had a sneak peek and she dabbles in some of this with the communities that she works for. Um, so she might be in a good position to share, but I also included in your packet back beginning on page. I'm jumping the gun, but in relation to what Cohen Esri had requested, I would note that they, they made a modified request. That's in the letter in your packet, towards the very end of the packet. And I'll jump, jump to the chase there, cut to the chase. They, they requested the board consider a contribution of 350,000 to up, up, offset the additional expense of the project. Um, I do know that 440 is our projected amount. That the TID 2 is likely to contribute in its first year of supplying the affordable housing extension with funding. So that's some, um, that's kind of the extent of my comments. I, I'd like to take some time to make sure I address all of your questions now, Chris.
Okay, I'm going to go opposite or this time, Kristen comments. Since this is your, one of your areas of expertise, so I'm going to start with you.
Not an area of expertise. I, I do dabble in it. Um, uh, but I leave the experts, um, like Jason and Nicole to, to advise me when I am out in the field and working with communities on doing marketing studies around housing. Um, I love that we're trailblazing. Um, after Todd shared this, um, I'm in in the midst of one project with a community, another community and about to start a third project um, on housing with another community in the Dane County area. And I said, I think one of keys told them both, I think one of key is going to come up with something pretty innovative regarding how they're using TIF extensions. Um, you, you put a pin in it and we'll, I'll get back to you on that in a, in a couple of months. Um, to see what they decide as a community, what we decide as a community. Um, so I'm excited about this. I like the idea of the revolving loan fund because that means if we extend a TIF, um, or the, the, the similarities with the revolving loan fund, because we are not just using the money that we gain from that extra year of TIF or TID to fund one project, but we're really making a long-term investment that we can renew over the, the course of um, our lifetime as a community. So I'm really excited about a lot of different aspects of this. Um, I'll say that the city of La Crosse bullet point you, you see in there, um, one of my colleagues, Carl Green, who's a professor of community development in, uh, La Crosse County was interested in doing that. And he talks, um, quite extensively at a lot of different meetings that we have about housing, about how successful some of those, um, projects have been in La Crosse as a community and really been transformational. Although they're very, very different community than we are. Um, but this sort of innovation has been successful. So I'm excited to see where it goes. That's, I think that's all my comments.
Okay, Nyla?
Okay, I have something going through, through my mind and any of you can give me an explanation so I can understand this. When, when we have a TID, it can be 20 years or more. And that increment that the business receives, we never, the, the village never asks for a payback after half the time. So we're, it's a total investment into that project. So then when it comes to one year of increment being used for housing, I don't understand, stand the, I understand you have to replenish the fund. But I don't understand how it can just be, um, I think there has to be flexibility there because with different projects to expect uh, 50% back after 15 years may not be possible because, um, let's say it's, it's a, a small beginner housing project. Um, you know, I just don't see how, um, it would be great for some projects to do that. So I think there needs to be a lot of flexibility there. Please tell me what I'm thinking is wrong, if you think so.
Okay.
Uh, I guess I would only add Nyla that I, I think are the, as our, as our programs evolve, we will, we, I think we will see fit to consider policies that perhaps would be more flexible and fit the needs of, of the, um, the development community that has interest in our community. Now, I, you know, I'd add that even, even programs change. As the programs and the sources of funds change for these projects, we may see, we may see the need to modify our, our parameters even more based on state or federal law changes. So this definitely needs to be flexible is a good word. And, and I just, I guess I don't, I, I'm, I think it's tricky to stick it in there because I, um, I don't yet know enough exactly what we're going to be best be flexible for. Um, which is, which is almost to your point, a reason to be flexible, right? Um, so, uh, good points. Those are, those are good points.
Okay, thanks, Nyla. Aaron?
Um, kind of, I guess going off what Kristen and Todd both said, like, I like the idea of the forgivable, like the forgivable loan, that it's a loan, because as we talked about, like the need for affordable housing is not new and yet it's also not going anywhere. And so I think we have this opportunity here. We might not get it again for a while. And, you know, if we can know that, okay, this fund isn't just going to be depleted and now what? I think we're setting future boards and community up for success.
Okay, thanks, Erin. Um, Dr. Random?
So I guess I have a couple of things, of course. First, it's my understanding and somebody told me that eventually we, it's potentially will have a relatively large TID close, is that correct? Like a $2 million one?
Yeah, we do, uh, actually Renee, if Renee can jump on, Renee did do, um, a quick look at, uh, the different districts and what could come from future closures. Now, keep in mind that for each particular district, we have to take action by resolution, like you did last meeting to extend it for each district. But Renee, do you want to touch base on what you saw?
Um, yeah, I'm, I was going to pull up that, um, spreadsheet, Todd. Do you think that's a good idea?
Yeah, that, that's easy enough.
Okay. So can you see my screen now?
Maybe zoom, zoom in if you could. Bottom right, bottom right corner.
So I, I, my assumptions here were that, uh, any TID that was going to have the possibility of closing early that we would, um, you know, adopt a similar resolution that we did for TID 2. So you can see, um, this is kind of the influx, um, that we could potentially see in increment. So our first is the one that we just did TID 2 of about 440,000. That's again, an estimate. We won't know that amount till next December. Um, exactly. But then, um, you know, it TID 4 would potentially be our next one that we, um, would be online to close early. We could extend that. TID 5, um, out a couple more years. The biggest one right now would be TID 6. Um, and that's out, you know, about eight years. Um, would be the, um, you know, it's, I think it's projected to close in 2027. We'd extend it 2028 and so on. All the way down to, you know, TID 8, we wouldn't be able to do it till 2039. Um, the only one that's currently not projected to close early is TID 3, so that's not included on here. This kind of just gives you that sort of the timeframe and the amounts that could potentially be added to, uh, this fund.
And that, that, that obviously is dependent on additional value generated in any of these districts over time, that may accelerate the closure period as well as the final year increment. So this is our current snapshot, right, Renee?
Yep, yep. Based on the latest projections that Ellers has done for all of our TIDS.
Thanks.
Thanks, Renee. And so, and second, then I guess I'm kind of hoping that the process isn't the, that are, what we're driving to isn't designed just for this project, that it's more of a long-term sustainable, I mean, the Cohen project, I would like it to be something that we had open bidding, long-term project type possibilities that this money could be sort of used as seed money to, uh, pull, pull projects in as opposed to picking on certain projects. Uh, and then trying to develop and then building the, building the frame around the project to build a frame that produces more projects would be better.
Um, Bill, that, that is, I hope for the very same thing. And I wonder if Nicole or Jason have seen um, models like that, that have worked well?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Yeah, I was just gonna say as, um. You know, the city of Madison uses TIF extension as well as other general budget authority. And they, they do an annual RFP and why I like that structure is that they are then, you know, even though they don't. Own the land or otherwise control the project, they are able to set their priorities in terms of what they want to see. Through that RFP. So if you want to access that funding, you have to meet their criteria and compete with other projects. So I think that's, that speaks exactly to what you point out. And that's a great idea.
I think what we can do with that, Bill, and I assume Madison maybe does this too, is hone in on what, what. The, the plan commission and the village board see, um, critical for the type of. Housing product addition to our community. And then we can work our RFP to pursue exactly. What's identified as a, you know, an area of need.
Okay, Gary, Hertzler. You're still muted, Gary.
Yeah, I like what you put together because I think one thing it does, kind of like. The financial policy of us being able to do this, it kind of gives us a tool, but now I think. It gives the CDA something. I mean, I always thought the CDA was there kind of, you know, trying to come up with some ideas, but didn't know. If there was any money behind to do any of it. So to me, it gives them some tools now, or at least some ideas that. They can move forward. Otherwise, you get one of these committees who never accomplishes anything and then they get bored and they quit. I, I do get concerned and maybe this is something the board ought to think about. Is we look down that list of TIFs and then everybody goes, well, gosh, we can, we can take that one that's gonna close early and that one's gonna close early. And we can take all this money and put it towards affordable housing. And they forget about the ten meetings we went through on each one of these TIFs. And spent a pile of money on Ellers and Associates, putting together a financial analysis. To say, the reason we're doing this is because this TIF is gonna be successful. It's gonna close early and it's gonna be a benefit to the taxpayers of the community. That's how we sold all of these TIFs. So I don't want the public to start thinking, well, gosh, we're gonna do this on every TIF because then we're gonna have this pool of ten million dollars for affordable housing. And forget about the reason why all these TIFs got approved in the first place. And it was hard enough to get the taxpayers to go, to go along with them at that point. So I think. At some point, maybe the board needs to have an idea to say. Yeah, we wanna have a goal of a, a million dollars in affordable TIF money. That's there constantly, so we have something to do with projects, but. I don't know if you follow that, but I think we gotta be careful here because we got people that, you know, hate TIFs. Think we're gonna, you know, we're screwing the taxpayer and every one of them. And now we're just gonna go and extend it another year. So we gotta be really careful with this.
Yeah, you've heard me say, Gary, before the, the moment we opened a TIF district is the moment that we wanted to close it. Um, that's the goal. So I can, I can appreciate that. I, you know, I, I'm sort of interested in the concept you just brought up of maybe having. A target number that we try to aspire to, essentially a balance to hold to. Um, and in the extent that we fall below it, we perhaps then need to make a commitment to the upcoming TIF. Closure to re-contribute. I don't know that, you know, that might be a good charge for the CDA to explore that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I, I'd like, I mean, if you look at the communities, there's five or six that are doing any of this to start with, so. We'll be a trailblazer, but you see the projects, the communities our size are doing. You know, they're doing twenty thousand here and forty thousand there. I mean, they're not diving into this thing, you know, with. Four hundred thousand dollars on a project. They're looking at ways that they can kind of move their community forward, you know, a step at a time. So I think.
Often, often, often because that's, that's all they could get out of their closing district. Yeah. Is what I've saw, what I've seen with some of these smaller communities.
Yeah.
Bill.
Uh, like the tool, um, I think that, uh. The fifty, that fifty percent forget, big old. Fifty percent forgivable loan. Uh, award is, uh, something we should do. Uh, I think the program. As Todd has it laid out there is a good start. It's like a football game. You start with a plan. Now, along the way. The plan can be a, a bridge, it can be, uh, to fine tuned. So just because it's this way now, that doesn't mean it has to be that way for ten years. And I look forward to. A few more, uh, programs being presented. The fact that we have one to work on is great. Having a few more, maybe some smaller ones would be a lot better.
Okay, so I think that leaves me, um, with this. So I just have a couple of questions with regards to this and I'm not saying I'm for or against yet. As I'm listening to everyone. As it's proposed, one of the things that I'm not picking on Cohen Esri right now, I wanna be very clear about that. I'm just trying to get some sort of an understanding. Um, as I look up into our next topic, we're gonna talk about developer fees that come along with a project. I think it's something that we should tie this to, that if the developer fees for a regular project with no TIF assistance are this. We can't say that with this, we're gonna give money. I, I just think we have to tie those two together a little bit. We can't say we're gonna make more in our developer fees than a regular project would be potentially. And I don't know if that's the case. That's what I'm getting at. So I'm not picking on the Cohen Esri, but I look and see, oh, there's gonna be a million fifty thousand dollars in developer fee. That's not the rentals, that's not everything else that's gonna come with that. Okay, that's just what their fee is. And then they're asking us for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what is a typical fee, um, that a developer takes on any project? Generally, when it's in the affordable housing and or if it has light tech involved, all the different things. What is a typical developer fee? I think that's an important component to look at. Jason, um, help me with that, cuz I'm, I'm, that's the one thing I noticed in this. Yeah, I can, I can understand and I'm, I'm for the project. But I also wanna make sure that we're not trailblazing something we shouldn't trailblaze, um, with these funds. So, do you follow where I'm going with that?
Yeah, and I'm gonna defer to Nicole first on that one, if I may.
Okay, go ahead Nicole.
Um, developer fees on projects that use tax credits like the Cohen Esri project. Are higher than what you would see on a typical market rate development and that's for a number of reasons. One being that the projects do not generate much, if any cash flow that goes back to the developers. So the incentive to do the project is a higher development fee upfront. Another portion is that the development fee itself, um, drives the amount of tax credits that the project can receive. So. In the, in, um, most cases, um, the development fee will be quite high because that cost itself generates basis to generate those tax credits. But then a large portion, I believe in the Cohen Esri case, it was fifty percent is deferred. So they're not receiving it upfront. Um, they would receive it slowly over those fifteen years. Out of, out of cash flow if available. So it is hard to compare apples to apples if you are looking at, uh, tax credit projects compared to other projects that you may want to support. Um, the development fee amount is regulated by WIDA on a percentage basis.
Okay, so with that said, um, the, the fifty, fifty percent. I'm just trying to, to, to come to grips with not red tape. I wanna try to have this not red tape. So I feel like if we're putting red tape in, I don't really wanna do that. I wanna make it streamlined. So as, as people come in to ask for these funds. Assuming we have those funds available, that's a very, here's what, here's what, here's where, where it sits at. Here's the decision and how the decision goes about being made. Is it a, a subcommittee? Is it the village board? Is it, what, what is the process? That's my concern with this whole thing. We've already established that we will use TIF dollars out of it for affordable housing. We have money that we've set aside now. My deal is, all right, are we rushing it because of Cohen Esri? Yes, in, in essence, we, we, we are. Um, and, and to me, I don't like that, that we're rushing it. But I understand how difficult it is. And that's something that all the board members need to understand. To get their light tech award and those things, how stringent and how difficult it is for any organization to get that. So I, I want to do what I can to come up with something that we can at least accommodate in some way here, um, for that reason alone. Um, I, I don't want them to miss this opportunity. It's one a key missing out on that opportunity. All right, as well. So. Whether we're all gonna come to an agreement on what the process is tonight, that's what our goal is. Because we're gonna have to make a decision in our next meeting for the Cohen Esri folks. So whether it's this fifty percent policy, what Todd has recommended, I, I see red tape in that. I, I do, I see a lot of different moving parts that we're gonna have to fix. And as Todd mentioned, it's something that's gonna be a work in progress. I, I think if, if we are backing the Cohen Esri project, we should just say, this is the dollar amount that we're all comfortable with for this project right now. Based on the projected funds that we're gonna have. Um, knowing that they've already requested three, three hundred and fifty. And I know that's our next topic. So Brian, if you're going out of line here, please say something, but. That's what we kind of have to look at. These kind of, yeah, Bill said this last time, the course before the cart and stuff like that. That's what this is unfortunately in the situation and. You know, we may have to make an exception to a, whatever the rule we're gonna make, um, is that's coming up for this particular project. Is, is what I'm getting at. But right now, I, I almost feel like we still need to take a look at this. Just to throw something out there, I, I don't like. I, I'd like that we're gonna go ahead with the Cohen Esri and have a discussion about that and we can figure out what we're going to do for them right now, since we've already made that. But then we should throw this over to the CDA and have them come up with, here's what our policy, this is the recommendation that we're looking at for what we're going to do. It's just my feeling, I'm uncomfortable with putting anything out here right now, cuz I don't feel like it's a. It's like playing basketball, the first time you don't know the rules. Of the game, you're not gonna do very well. It's gonna end up poorly. So it's my opinion. Um, I know, I, I've said my piece, there's seven of us and so we need to kind of work through this. Todd, you, you used research and did a lot of work in this and I appreciate that. Uh, but I, I do feel that. You know, we need to have a little, something a little bit more agreeable to everyone and. We should take that next topic separately for, for this particular occasion. We're gonna have more of them as we just saw out into the future, that future boards are gonna have an opportunity to look at. We need to get a good, solid plan in place for how we're gonna do these in the future. That those boards can always have an opportunity to look at. My opinion. So. That said.
I would just say, I mean. Timing is an issue related to the Cohen Esri project. Um, we can pull Brian in, Brian Sweeney's I see here on the, as an attendee. But that, that's what moved us the way, the way it did. The other reason that this frankly. I mean, the, the notion of having a light tech project in front of us right now. And I, I don't think I've given enough credit is a really unique and frankly unexpected opportunity for our community. I see Kristen nodding her head, but it is not a little deal. And, you know, that, that's why I've, I've approached this with. With the vigor and energy that I have, so we could try to pull together the timing so that we can allow this to work. What works next? And, you know, hopefully there's time in front of us to work out what's next really well. But I, I don't know, Chris, that, Kristen, what, I saw you nodding your head about.
Yeah, um, my, my reaction was like, if we don't do this tonight, can we call an emergency meeting of the CDA next week to get this? Like publicly noticed in the policy, um, at least a temporary policy in place. Um, and my comment will be more about, you know, I realize the Cohen Edgery project. In, in an ideal world, we would, we would be able to spend several months talking about this and then act. But I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, that, that we have that much time with the Cohen Esri project. Cause they need to know by, is it March or?
Well, yeah, I can bring in Brian to talk about the timing if you want me to, Chris, but, but I, in the least, if. If, if, if we need to, if Chris, you want this sent down to the CDA for more discussion before it comes back to the board. Um, I would expect not only special meetings of the CDA, but perhaps of the board too. In order to, to shore this up, if, if we can shore it up.
So to be clear, and, and I, I hope I don't offend, and this is not to be meaning political. But this is like the last impeachment we had of a president that there was timeframes that they just couldn't. They were operating and then didn't get done with what they needed to get done. And bottom line, this is what we're doing right now and what we're faced with is something that we don't have the timeframe to actually get this done. With what Kristen's saying, call emergency meetings. It's very difficult to do that, cuz we still would have to vet this out over several meetings to get to policy. I, I just don't think we're gonna be able to get it done, um, in the timeframe. So to me, I look at. Let's send this back to the CDA. We can come to an agreement with what we're going to do for Cohen Esri. We've already approved that the dollars are going to be used. So we can come to an agreement on, as a board, once we go and, and talk about that negotiation. What we're going to do for this particular project, knowing that we don't have it, but we do have the dollars already approved by us. So, and we may go in and say, you know what, we're not gonna give them anything. I don't know what all your opinions are on that, but at least we're gonna go, knowing that here's, we're just, we're, we're going straightforward with this. Picking out a dollar amount, what we're going to give towards the project. We know what they've asked for. And there's nothing saying that we couldn't put in right now that we're gonna do a, a fifty percent and it's gonna be paid back fifty percent back. We can still do that. I just think that this policy, we shouldn't make the decision tonight. I just don't think that's the right way to go. We're gonna, we're gonna create a different problem, I think. Jason.
I guess I have, I may have misinterpreted what I heard you say earlier, Chris, and I'm seeking to clarify or maybe offer a suggestion. I, what I thought I heard was that you were saying that, uh, the board could reach a decision on, on. The amount of money that it would grant to the Cohen Esri project and not set a more permanent policy. That may not have been your intent, cuz you haven't said anything further like that. Uh, but that would lead me to a suggestion. Just to raise the possibility that you might consider using these in a provisional way for this one decision and then seek. To make it more permanent afterward, just.
You just more eloquently said what I said.
Okay.
And maybe this is for Brian, but. When we take the money from to do and say, this money will be used for, for housing. Do we need to have a program in place or this is because the board said we would like a program in place? Is, is the money fully up to the seven of us to make that decision?
You're asking me, Erin?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think that if the board wants to, they can do what Chris and Jason and, and just said and what you're getting at, which, you know, I'm looking at. Page forty-three of the packet and there's a recommended motion and, and, and there's a, essentially what you could do is you could. You could make one motion. And you'd have one motion that would say, look, we, we wanna send this criteria to the CDA and have them look at it. And you don't even need to, you don't need to adopt these criteria for the, for tonight. To be able to move on to the next agenda item and have a discussion, whether it's open or closed session as to. You know, what amount of money that you might wanna give to Cohen Esri and, and the terms and conditions of that agreement. Because I agree with what Todd is, and Todd has said it and other people have said it. It seems like you're trailblazing here and you're probably gonna end up coming with a policy that's gonna need to have a little bit of flexibility and quite frankly, that policy may change. As the years go on. And to your specific question, Erin, we just have to me, use the money for affordable housing under the statutes. You don't have to have a policy in place to be able to give, you know, to be able to reach an agreement with, with Cohen Esri. The big issue is if you reach an agreement with Cohen Esri to use this money, it just needs to satisfy the affordable housing criteria within the statutes. Nyla.
Okay, um. After working for, for a year on the housing task force, I saw that there is a, a big need. For this type of housing that Cohen Esri is trying to get done in Wannakee. If it was ideal times, we'd have a policy written, but nothing is ever ideal. And I feel that we need to. Move forward for this project and determine whatever we're going to determine so that Cohen Esri is not in constant limbo. Myself, I hate being in limbo. I would like to see, you know, give them an answer and then work on a policy of through the CDA. Um, and that will come back to the board. It may take quite a while to come up with a policy, but we do need to make a decision pertaining to the Cohen Esri. Project. Thank you.
Okay, so we, we, we have to entertain a motion on what we're going to do here. We can either make a motion to go with what Todd recommended right off the bat. We can make a motion to move this into the CDA. For them to come and make a recommendation to us for the policy. That's still okay to do, and our next topic really doesn't have anything to do with that. We can make a decision in a provisional way for that topic. So I, or we can do nothing, we can table it. That's something you could do too.
I'll move that we put it into the CDA. To develop a policy.
A policy recommendation. Okay, so motion by Bill Random, do we have a second? Okay. Nyla, you're on mute.
Okay, what is the, he's saying he would like.
Like us to create a policy before irrespective, I don't know how to say this correctly, Brian can help a bunch here. Because I'd like us, is there, because I think this is what Chris is coming to. Is that we put it to the CDA to create a policy irrespective of what we do with Cohen, whatever they are, Cohen.
Yeah, that's how, that's how I understood the motion. The motion was not going to, the motion was going to essentially not address the project as part of this and just say. Motion to. Have the CDA give further consideration and preparation of a policy to recommend to the village board.
That's correct.
Another, another question, so then.
We're going to need a second before we should have a second discussion. So do we have a second to Bill's motion?
I have to answer my question.
Okay, I'll make the second. To it, Nyla, go ahead.
Okay, my question is, so then we could still make a determination with the Cohen Esri project if we voted for. Dr. Random's. Motion.
Yes. Yes, that's the way I interpret the motion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Aaron.
Again, I guess clarify for one sec. So we're saying, CDA, please give us more feedback on this program.
Please make more recommendation, yes.
If we, you know, if that we create this program. We might have X amount of money left based off what we do in the meantime, that could fill this to start.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other comments? Todd?
I guess I just want to share that I'm not out in front of myself here. That this was, this was the direction I was given by the board, that the board did not want to consider. An award to Cohen Esri without a policy hand to guide that decision. So I want, I want to be clear with the board and for the public who's watching to understand that I wasn't jumping the gun. I was carrying out what was requested of me by the village board and how this was to play out. So I'm fine with, I'm fine with however you care to do it. I just want to be clear that I was following the guide, the guidance given by the board.
And I think we would all agree with that. Oh, Gary, go ahead.
No, I was, I was going to say that we all agree with that, Todd. It's just, it's more complex, I think, than we assumed until we started digging into it now. I think we just want more time and I think the CDA is a good place to start.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Kalen, I hope you're still awake. You haven't been called on in a while. Can we take a roll call vote, please?
Yep, Kristen Ronge. Yes. Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Delner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Now we have. Next we have discuss, discuss and take action, let's see. Discuss and take action on conceptual development agreement and TIF assistance request for affordable housing project at 701 705 West Main Street. Are we discussing this in open session at all, Todd?
I guess I want to understand how you'd like to approach it, because I think. I think the, I think the game has changed a little bit, so tell me how you want the game to work.
Okay, I'm not just.
Or, or, no, you know what I mean, or maybe Jason and Nicole, I need, I need your help to offer guidance on. How best to sort of align, align the stars here.
I'm going to defer to Brian on the question of when you go into closed session. But I clearly think it is your intent that you want to begin discussing. If and in what form you would offer assistance to Cohen Esri.
Go ahead, Brian. Yeah, I would say, I mean, I agree with Jason, you essentially, you essentially have a policy discussion as to whether or not you want to provide some type of. Monetary relief and other terms and conditions to the extent, to the extent that you want to actually have a discussion. And I think it probably is the case that you do, that you want to have a discussion on what terms and conditions you would be open to negotiating with them. That's clearly a closed session discussion. So what I'm hearing is that we should first decide, do we, are we, are we interested in providing assistance for this project? And if the answer is yes, then it's going to come down to what is our negotiating position, which then would go into closed session. Is that fair?
Yes, that is a fair statement.
Okay, so I'll just ask that question. Do we want to entertain? The Cohen Esri project and providing financial assistance through our TIF funds? So asking that question, I'd look through a show of hands for those who are interested. In that. In providing funds. Those who are not interested in providing funds, please put your hand up. Okay, so we have two abstainers, one vote against and four that are for. If I had to guess, the, my guess would be maybe, I don't want to speak for them, but maybe Bill and Phil are, it depends on what the deal is. Yeah, which we can't, we can't talk about our negotiating position yet. Yeah, so, yeah, but I mean, I would say that you have a sufficient number of people to suggest, okay, there's support for it. And but then the purpose of the closed session would be, but under what terms and conditions? Okay, that would be, so then we would need a motion to go into closed session, is that right? Yeah, somebody would need to read the, what Caitlin and Todd prepared, and then you'd have the motion. Okay, so I would read then, the village board may convene in closed sessions authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851E. For the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene in open session. And discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So do we have a motion to go into closed section?
I move to go into closed session.
Motion by Kristen Runge, do I have a second?
Yeah.
By Bill Random. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Can I do a quick point of order? Do we also want to make a motion on the second item for closed sessions? You don't have to come back out.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yes, you can, yep.
So we'll do two separate motions, right?
Yep, we'll do this vote first, and then I just didn't want everyone to start jumping off before.
Gotcha, go ahead.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Ronge.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Delner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Gary, or Erin Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, then next we had discuss and take action on review of employee performance and compensation related to proposed reorganization. Todd, do you want to make any comments on this before I read?
I'll move, we go into closed session to.
I have to read it first, Aaron, hold on a second. The village board may convene in closed sessions authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.5, 19.851C. For the purpose of considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body. Has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
I'll move, we go in the closed session.
Motion by Aaron Rand, second by Nyla Fry. Any other comments? Roll call Caitlin.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Ronge.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Delner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so Todd, you're going to put the thing up on the screen and tell everybody.
I will, I will, and I would add, I, I don't, I don't expect that there's going to be action out of closed session. Based on how the, how our conversation has evolved over the past couple agenda items. So I don't expect that, although we will come back to open session to conclude the meeting. So now the village board can, can jump ship from this meeting, enter the other, the other link that you were sent earlier. For those on attendees, I'm going to put up a screen. And we'll be putting up a screen that shows that we're in closed session. And then I will be, we will return when that concludes. And I see Nicole and Jason did, were you guys, did I send you the link for the closed session? Okay, I will forward it shortly. That's why you were waiting, wasn't it?
And I'm going to run to the bathroom too, so I'll be.
Okay, I think some others are doing that too.
Right back.
Uh, current, if for, for a total of seventy thousand in taxes per year, then I think what Gary is saying would be our share.
Well, wait a minute, I don't understand. Only three million. I mean, I'm looking at the sheet here, saying our cost, it's just eight twenty-one million.
Yeah, that, uh, Nicole, this is probably where you jump in. This is, this is, this isn't valued like a typical, typical project.
Well, it is actually valued like the typical, most expensive property, but the difference is that the rents are much lower.
Yeah, that's right.
It's much lower, so the value, you know, the value really is, doesn't have anything to do with how much it costs to build it. Uh, besides the fact that, you know, unless you're building anything different, but the value is completely from the rent to the income stream, the company.
So, but your point is Gary though, is the taxation's about forty thousand dollars a year after. I mean, I, Renee sent back, she looked into this and she came back and said, we can be getting the village portion, but be an additional fourteen thousand seven fifty. Then I just kinda look at the schools, it's usually about fifty percent or about twenty-five. So I said maybe they're about twenty-five thousand for the school, so together, that's about an additional forty thousand a year in taxes. Does that make sense, Renee?
Um, I really have to look at what I was, uh, so, it would not even stand off of because the, the Cohen Esri is who is saying that they're expecting about seventy thousand a year in taxes. And this was, that was maybe a, what I gave you was maybe an earlier estimate. I don't recall.
So, you know, would you be saying the wrong value, is that true, Nicole? I mean, there, the, the value's based on, not on the properties, based on the cash street currently and then they're adjusting the cash street down.
I was, I was confused. I have one, one area that said that was valued at ten point seven million. And then I have this other one that said between three and three and a half million, so it confused me.
Yeah, the ten point seven million is the cost to, to build the building, the three point three is the assessed value or valuation. Uh, I mean, you know, in terms of your question about influencing that, you know, the rent, the rent and loans are limited by Wido, so those kind of are what they are. And then operating expenses, you know, I'm not quite sure I know a, a developer that would inflate their operating expenses to, to reduce their cash flow and their valuation. Typically they have, uh, that surface covered ratios that may have to be, so that those operating expenses get to be out of line.
Doesn't that seem to me, that seems like too big a gap, is that a nine dollar gap or is that something that happens?
On these, uh, projects, particularly with your five percent credits where they have a very wide range of affordability, I would say that's pretty typical. I've done a lot of projects around this size, forty to fifty units and, um, that is certainly not out of line for what I've seen in my experience of completed projects.
So are we basically gonna be supporting them to, if they're, if they're like, sort of an implicit village tax support them to the project forever?
Right, right, having.
I have a gap. I mean, you basically have a gap that has to come somewhere. Like yet, to this point, seems that the only place to come from would be the, if you put something else there, say you put eight duplexes there or, or seven duplexes there, their. Value would approach that, but you'd be taxed on the same, I'm just giving a hard time on the accounting for where that seven million goes. The, the developers are going to leave seven million on the ground. I mean, it's, it's taken it somewhere.
Yeah, I would, sorry, go ahead, Nicole.
No, you, you go ahead, Jason.
I, I, I think in principle, that's a fair statement, though. I think there's, there's seven million in costs and improvements going in here and. In effect, that's being designated, it's not, is, is not taxable because of the rents that are being charged. And so it does in effect become a, uh, a longer term subsidy to maintain that affordable housing. It's, it's an ongoing. In my opinion, Nicole might see it a little differently, but I, I, I think you're right on that it becomes an ongoing, uh, village contribution to, helping to maintain the affordability of that.
I mean, it's exactly why the tax rate system is structured as it is, because costs are so much higher and value capability and the equity in the first year to obtain another construction. But it's solely construction and position of that, uh, because what the tax rate is designed to do is not an ongoing rental assistance. But as you mentioned, yes, the, um, original market rate development for village would be foregoing, what would be additional, um, taxes from, you know, if there was a market rate project.
I think we get one third of that.
Sorry?
It looks like we get about thirty percent of what, no. If it was a ten million dollar project, they're saying it's between three and three and a half, the valuation. We're getting about thirty percent of what we would've, if they would get on a project like that.
A market rate project would be valued by its rents as well, so I'm not quite sure. Maybe if our, if your cost in eleven million or value up to eleven million exactly.
So what I was trying to figure out, just so you guys went in a little different direction, that's fine. I was just trying to figure out what is our payback time? For when we're gonna be, for when we're collecting for taxes, for what we're gonna give out right now? And why would we, maybe we don't need to do a loan, maybe we're, we're, we get fast enough that we don't need to, we don't need to have a whole situation where we're giving forgiveness. I mean, we're, we're increasing a property that's been sitting there from seventeen thousand dollars in taxes, now I'm, I'm saying it's forty or fifty, whatever that number is. So we are increasing value, so we are bringing in more revenue right out the back. I mean, my comment, my, when Mike throws to this, I print down here, it's the village, you get additional, you know, fourteen in taxes and the school, let's say it's twenty-five, so we get an additional forty thousand dollars. Versus the land just saying vacant. It's like, it's seventy years to put a project there, you know, that's two hundred eighty thousand dollars, that we're making in taxes that we wouldn't have made otherwise.
Well, there have been other projects proposed, there's my understanding, that's true, that's true, Tom, right? Is that they had to put retail on, so that was difficult to have retail there. My problem with the project is just, I am scared to death of the spot. I hate it. I hate that spot. Because I know somebody's gonna get smoked there, so I'll get it out on the table. I just hate that spot, because you're gonna put a bunch of kids in a blocked area. And it is a miserable place to have kids in that car, no matter how much space you put as a playground there, they're gonna cross that street and somebody's getting hit. And I, I, I love the idea of the project, I hate where it is and I will, I can't vote for the same with what it is right now. Just where it's at, it's dangerous. And that, that's my truth, and I say I don't care about this much about the other stuff, is I do that is dangerous. And I, and I, and I don't want to be responsible.
Um, one, one thing I'd add about the, for the, the, uh, forgivable loan element, Cohen Esri will accept that. In fact, they suggested it. There are elements to their financing deal and your, your Nicole can help, but that, that is not hard for them to accept at all. So why is it in there in my proposal? Um, frankly, it's because they suggested it.
Can I clarify something?
Yeah.
The money, when it comes back in loan form, this goes back to our housing fund, right? Not to start general.
Well, it can, it, I guess it's up for the board to decide, but that would be, that would, that's how the policy was designed, that it would, it would sort of become this revolving. System of support for additional future projects.
Okay.
Okay, so Bill, Bill, it sounds like you're not gonna vote this project no matter what because of the locations, okay? I know where you're, you're, you stand, uh, Gary, Gary, go ahead. You know, I've written this out so I can kinda cover my thoughts on this project. Um, you know, I, I set the pros on the project. I thought from a tax standpoint, it makes sense if that land is gonna sit there vacant, I thought that was, you know, a positive thing. And I just wanted to clarify, because I'm confused on the market rate apartments. Because their version of a market rate, single bedroom apartment is nine hundred and seventy dollars. Market rate apartments in Wanake are twelve hundred and fifty dollars. So where does that three hundred dollars difference come from? And I got to, I just went to the land house and I went to the Laurel, a single bedroom, which is twelve fifty. Why is their market rates, you know, one bedroom apartment ninety seventy? I mean, it's like eighty percent of what the market rate is. That's just a question I don't understand.
If you have to ask them, it could be connected, I'm gonna guess it's connected to amenities or, you know, whatever, maybe it's the actual square footage or the finishes, if they use it. Um, it would be interesting to ask them that, they, maybe guess if they're like me, they're gonna find they can charge more and they will charge more. Because those, those, those options, maybe that will, will make a difference.
I just don't understand what market rate means. Market rate means what, what a normal person would pay is for a one bedroom apartment in Wanake.
Or market rate could mean that it's not tied to income, right? They're gonna get the most for what they, for that unit because they can versus the units that they're dedicating to the different price points, uh, the different percentages of area immediate income.
So, I guess the other, my other concerns, my other concerns are, I've never seen anything come off our planning commission. I was just baffled by it. There's so many unanswered questions about this project. I sent an email a week ago. Because I was just wondering, you know, I heard that the patio doors don't open on the building. That building probably has fifty, I don't know, fifty patio doors. They don't open any more than three inches from what I know. I asked, but, you know, to me, we have a developer who brought a project in. It was too big to fit on the property. He had to buy the lot next door because it wouldn't fit. I don't know why he didn't shrink his project to fit on the lot, but instead, he had to buy the other lot to fit this property. We made, I mean, I think we negotiated down our parking from a hundred and five down to ninety-six stalls. My concern with that is, the first time that ninety-six stalls isn't enough, the only thing there is to take away in that project is get rid of the playground, add some more parking stalls. So that concerns me. Um, I still don't know. They added.
Gary, Gary, turn it over. Gary, turn it over.
I don't know, I finish my thoughts.
I, I want you to finish your thought, but I have to make sure we're in a closed session right now that we're not getting off on what we can really talk about. Brian, are we okay? Well, I think, what, what I've heard Bill say and what I've heard Gary say is reasons why they may not wanna vote for the, we, we can create any terms and conditions for the project, so.
So we're okay?
Yeah.
I think we're okay. Okay, go ahead, Gary. I'm starting to drop, I, I just wanted to make sure we're.
Or, or potentially to get other village board members to come down to a different number if they're gonna hire, so I guess, yeah, I do think we're going to have some terms.
Yeah, thank you, sorry, Gary. It sounds like when I sent the email about developing these, and I think everybody would approve this project at our last meeting. I heard the balconies were six inches. That was the depth of the balcony, eight feet wide by six inches. And now they moved that out to two feet after I asked the question. So now they have balconies on that building, and I don't know if the patio doors now with those balconies that are two feet wide, is the patio doors even open? We have in our comprehensive plan, housing goals, avoid concentrating such units in one location, avoid isolation, such as units from other housing. There isn't another house besides the huge apartment across the street within two blocks there. So we're doing exactly what we say we don't want it to do. You know, and to Bill's point, this thing is gonna have a higher number of kids at affordable housing, and I'm not sure what that number is, eighty? Whatever that number is, we have a high number of kids in probably one of the most dangerous areas of town to try to cross the street. And those kids, they're not gonna stay there. Now, we do say that we should have affordable housing next to parks and schools. This affordable housing isn't anywhere near a park or any of our schools. So the ninety-six cars that we put in the parking lot, which I don't think will be enough, and they'll probably have to go up, and we'll have to get rid of the playground. Those ninety-six cars, if this is workforce housing, at seven o'clock in the morning, when those, let's say fifty or sixty kids have to go to school. They gotta cross through a parking lot, down the street, and try to cross one of the busiest air sections in our village. So, beyond that, this is just my personal thought. I love this affordable project, even somewhere else in the village. But I think it was rushed through the planning commission, it's been rushed through here. We, I mean, I've got questions I still haven't gotten answers on. You know, you're willing to give these people four thousand dollars without knowing what the project is. So, and, and my last thought is, that's the gateway to the west side of Wanake. We say in our long range plans, we wanna make sure the gateway to Wanake is a beautiful site. You know what? I don't think this building, I, I don't like the design at all. And it's just my personal thought, I think it's ugly shit. And fifteen years from now, it's not gonna look any better for everybody who comes to the west side of Wanake. So that's, that's why I can't support this project at all. Okay, thanks, Gary. Gary, you had to end up with it.
Okay, a few things. I have spent most of my winter dog city at the seven oh five, so, and it's right next to the parkland we preserved last year. And like every, I think it's gorgeous and I think it's really cool that, you know, this apartment is right next to this land we just conserved. Also, I don't have the project right in front of me, but, I mean, McDonald's has a sidewalk in front of it, and I'm assuming the project next to that sidewalk, right, those two. So speaking of like kids getting to school, I, I mean, I don't know, we, I understand, like, you know, we're not allowed to play in front, like, we're in the back, but. You know, you can get to Heritage, which are, where you know, like, even up to Century, like, they're pretty close to what schools in downtown, so. I think location wise, you know, I don't think that's an issue, but I don't know.
Phil?
My, my issues with the, uh, property are it's, that it's too big for the site, it's too close to the road. Uh, there's not even enough room between that building and the highway to park a car up front, there's barely enough room for a sidewalk and a couple of bushes. So I think it's, it's too close to the road, it's too big for the, it's too big for both properties. Uh, and it's ugly. It's, other than that, I'll support the housing project, that maybe I would support it there if it was considerably smaller. That's it. That's that.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about voting on three hundred and fifty thousand for them and that, we decided, things we voted on a while ago because.
But that, that is not hard for them to accept at all. So, why is it in there in my proposal? Frankly, it's because they suggested it. Well, it can, I guess it's up for the board to decide, but that would be, that would, that's how the policy was designed, that it would, it would sort of become this revolving system of support for additional future projects.
I just don't understand what market rate means, market rate means, what, what a normal person would pay is for a one-bedroom apartment in Wanakee.
Or market rate could mean that it's not tied to income. Right, they're gonna get the most for what they, for that unit because they can versus the units that they're dedicating to the different price points, uh, the different percentages of area of immediate income.
So, I guess the other, my other concerns, my other concerns are, I've never seen anything come off our planning commission. I'm just baffled by it. There's so many unanswered questions about this project. I sent an email a week ago. Because I was just wondering, you know, I heard that the patio doors don't open on the building. That building probably has fifty, I don't know, fifty patio doors. They don't open any more than three inches from what I know. I asked, but, you know, to me, we have a developer who brought a project in. It was too big to fit on the property. He had to buy the lot next door because it wouldn't fit. I don't know why he didn't shrink his project to fit on the lot. But instead, he had to buy the other lot to fit this property. We made, I mean, I think we negotiated down our parking from a hundred and five down to ninety-six stalls. My concern with that is, the first time that ninety-six stalls isn't enough, the only thing there is to take away in that project is get rid of the playground, add some more parking stalls. So that concerns me. I still don't know. They added- I don't know, finish my thoughts.
I, I watched your thoughts, but I have to make sure we're in a closed session right now that we're not getting off on what we should really talk about. Brian, are we okay?
Well, I think, what, what I heard Bill say and what I heard Gary say is reasons why they may not wanna go for the, wait, maybe you can create any terms and conditions for the project, so.
So we're okay?
Yeah.
I want to make sure we're okay. Okay, go ahead, Gary. I'm starting to drop, but I, I just wanna make sure we're more-
Or potentially to get other village board members to come down to a different number if they're gonna hire. So I just, yeah, I do think you would want some terms.
Oh, yeah, thank you, sorry, Gary. It sounds like when I sent the email about the balconies, and I think everybody would approve this project at our last meeting. I heard the balconies were six inches. That was the depth of the balcony, eight feet wide by six inches. And now they moved that out to two feet after I asked the question. So now they have balconies on that building. And I don't know if the patio doors, now with those balconies that are two feet wide, is the patio doors even open? We have in our comprehensive plan, housing laws, avoid concentrating such units in one location, avoid isolation, such as units from other housing. There isn't another house besides the huge apartment across the street within two blocks there. So we're doing exactly what we say we don't want it to do. You know, and to Bill's point, this thing is gonna have a higher number of kids, it's affordable housing, and I'm not sure what that number is, eighty? Whatever that number is, we have a high number of kids in probably one of the most dangerous areas of town to try to cross the street. And those kids, they're not gonna stay there. Now, we do say that we should have affordable housing next to parks and schools. This affordable housing isn't anywhere near a park or any of our schools. So the ninety-six cars that we put in the parking lot, which I don't think will be enough, and they'll probably have to go up. And we'll have to get rid of the playground. Those ninety-six cars, if this is workforce housing, at seven o'clock in the morning, when those, let's say fifty or sixty kids have to go to school, they gotta cross through a parking lot, down the street, and try to cross one of the busiest air sections in our village. So, beyond that, this is just my personal thought. I love this affordable project even somewhere else in the village. But I think it was rushed through the planning commission, it's been rushed through here. At least, I mean, I've got questions I still haven't got answers on. You mean, you're willing to give these people four thousand dollars without knowing what the project is? So, and, my last thought is, that's the gateway to the west side of Wanakee. We say in our long-range plans, we wanna make sure the gateway to Wanakee is a beautiful site. You know what? I don't think this building, I, I don't like the design at all. And it's just my personal thought, I think it's ugly yet. And fifteen years from now, it's not gonna look any better for everybody who comes to the west side of Wanakee. So that's, that's why I can't support this project at all.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Gary, you had your end up, go ahead.
Okay, a few things. I have spent most of my winter dog city at the Seven O Five. So, and it's right next to the parkland being preserved last year and like every, I think it's gorgeous and I think it's really cool that, you know, this apartment is right next to this land we just conserved. Also, I don't have the project right in front of me, but, I mean, McDonald's has a sidewalk in front of it, and I'm assuming project to be next to that sidewalk, right, those two. So, speaking of like kids getting to school, I, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I understand, like, you know, we're not allowed to play in front, like, we're in the back, but you can get to Heritage, which are, where, you know, like, even up to Century, like, we're pretty close to those schools in downtown, so, I think location-wise, you know, I don't think that's an issue, but I don't know.
Phil?
My issues with the property are it's, that it's too big for the site. It's too close to the road. Uh, there's not even enough room between that building and the highway to park a car up front. There's barely enough room for a sidewalk and a couple of bushes. So I think it's, it's too close to the road, it's too big for the, it's too big for both properties. And it's ugly. It's, other than that, I'll support the housing project, then maybe I would support it there if it was considerably smaller. That's it.
Chris, that.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about voting on three hundred and fifty thousand for them and that, we decided things we voted on a while ago because this all did go through the planning commission. Uh, there were questions that I really wish people would have spoken up at that point in time, or, you know, in the many other meetings. They came to us, what was it, September of twenty, twenty nineteen, yeah. Uh, it was, the, like, presented before I was on the board, presented this, the housing plan in July. I forget if it was August, September, or the first meeting in October, that uh, Kona's, you first started talking, so, so the project's been in the works for a while. Uh, I think if there are design issues, we've got a lot of people look at the design of the building, and I, I get it, it's maybe not everybody's aesthetic. Uh, I get, I totally understand the concerns about students crossing back and forth, and I'm sure that the bus is gonna pick them up, but they're running around, yeah, that's, there is, there's a safety concern here. Um, what's in the back of my head is that the line tech projects come along once in a community's premiere, sometimes for years to, to get them. Uh, the awards are hard to get, the scoring is difficult. Uh, developers that we would want to work with would be the developers that are gonna either buy an existing property, rehabilitate it, hold it indefinitely, or build and hold it indefinitely, not send it again, sell it again in the fifteen-year period for market rate, Kona's rate, does, the period, has said that they're gonna do that, but I've seen their buildings, that's what they do, they buy and they hold, or they don't sell. Uh, so there's a lot of reasons that I'm in favor of this project, like every project, it's not going to be perfect. But, um, if, it, part of me is if not this, then what, and when? We have formulas for this, or, from what I understand, it's starting to change because there's so much pressure to build affordable housing in rural areas, that I don't, I, I would not bet money that, that it would be easy to get projects like this in and around the metropolitan areas of Dade County or Milwaukee County, I could be completely talking out of turn with that, because maybe it'll be, it'll be just easier difficult for citizens to, so, so that's kind of my perspective on, on this. Take it or leave it, I think it's a project, we need affordable housing. You know, would it be great in another part of town? Sure, it would be. Is it likely to happen in another part of town? I don't know, I don't know. Uh, I don't know, it's a, it's a, it's a big risk to take. So, uh, that's my piece.
Ryan, hold on for a second, Nyla.
Okay, um, the need for affordable housing is not going to go down, it has grown. And, it, that, if it gets built, it will be filled, and it won't necessarily be filled with new people in Wanakee. I know a family in Wanakee who was desperate for a three-bedroom, um, ca- handicapped accessible, um, apartment, and he had two handicapped uh, children in wheelchairs. To find something that will accommodate them right now, they, they are very cramped. Uh, they're having a very difficult time. Um, this is something that is very much needed. Our economy is going to keep adding business and industry. We need a place for workers to live. We also need places where senior citizens can move to when they decide to move out of their homes. There is so much need, and, and like Kristen said, these projects are hard to come by. I have felt very fortunate from the time I heard about this possibility, this project. I've said, I've been out there saying for twenty years, we need affordable housing, we need to have something that workers can afford to move into. Um, just because somebody can't afford to move into the, the very expensive homes doesn't mean that they aren't working, it just means that they aren't making as much money as, uh, laborers or people in restaurants used to. So, I, I, I am for the project, I agree, I agree, with Kristen, it is not perfect. Nothing's perfect. We could look forever for a site, find a site, and then not be able to get the housing brought in here. So that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Okay, Ryan, go ahead.
You know, I just wanted to make a point, Chris, I, I, I know they've received certain approvals at the planning commission, but I don't think that they have site plan approved yet. And so, from my standpoint, to the extent that you wanna, you know, if there are certain terms and conditions that you would wanna incorporate into a TIF agreement that addresses things that you wanna see on the site plan, that's fair game for the village board.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, I think that makes it easier then, we can put some of the concerns in.
You know, for example, I'm not saying that you have to do this, but, you know, if you have a concern about the parking, I mean, you could put something in there that says the playground has to be built and it can never be removed. You know, I mean, that would be a term and condition that you could include in, in the agreement if you wanted.
If we address like balcony widths and-
I think that you could, I, I think that, to the extent that you wanna see a different design, because, you know, the fact of the matter is once you provide money to this, and as long as it, you know, it satisfies the affordable housing, you can ask for whatever you want to ask for, and so if you have concerns about, and I'm not suggesting you should, I mean, I don't know anything about architecture, but I'm just saying, if you have concerns about the patio, certainly if you have concerns about the park, so, you know, going away at some point in time, those are things that you can incorporate into the style.
Okay, so, I, I, I'm just gonna say that I'm hearing right now that, uh, this looks like it's fifty-fifty whether we're gonna even agree that this project is gonna work. Uh, I could be wrong with that assessment, but I, I feel that vibe right now. Gary, go ahead. You're still getting here.
Well, just thinking, Phil brought this up before. I mean, we may want a long-term, that's from a zoning standpoint. I know we put this in zoning back in the day, that, hey, we have to have some, um, retail space over any multi-family. Like, you know, as Phil said earlier, this retail space is gonna sit empty. And, it won't get filled, and that's a big concern, like, that's just supposed to fill us. So maybe something you wanna consider long-term changing, um, for some of these projects. And I think that's a significant issue.
Yeah, so, now I think we're kinda, I mean, I'm not taking that criticism here, but now we're kinda stepping outside of that.
Thank you, Ryan. So, um, and I'm torn on this right now. Very heavily, uh, where, where we're at right now because of, our board is not out of consensus, not, I don't think. I, I wanna see this project out, I've said that. I agreed with, I think it was Phil. I'm not a big fan of how the project looks, but you know what? I'm, it'd be interesting, I have a holder, other people may see this project as beautiful, just like art. Um, art can be ugly to one person, beautiful to another, so, uh, I don't, I don't wanna break, break it down that way. Um, to Gary's points about the planning commission looking at the different details of this project, I think that they did do a good job of looking at the details. Um, your, your comments with regards to patios, I think the patios, Kevin, you need to probably speak up to this. The patios are that way from, from a safety perspective. Um, maybe they're not always supposed to open that much for that reason. Are they upstairs? Is that an issue? Is that at ground level?
You know, Chris, I, I think we've talked about the planning commission, but we haven't made any decisions at the planning commission yet. And we've heard certain proposals, depending on the level of, of incentive or, or income or or whatever assistance that the village can provide, so towards this project. So initially, we heard, you know, patios that were only like six inches deep, like we were saying. And I think we made it clear that there really wasn't acceptable to us, and at a staff, we want to see at least two feet, so somebody could at least open up their patio door, get a chair out there, have something to open space. What I don't know yet, because I don't think we have that level of detail yet, is how many are those, are patio doors, and how many are those, are just, they're just, you're saying that's a less expensive way of, of creating some light in the room? Of putting in these, you know, patio doors that are only a little four inches, that don't have, you know, any space outside. They would just have like a gate or something going across, or, or maybe nothing going across. That, that was my concern in terms of the, speaking of the quality of the building, and, and I'll, I'll leave it at that.
So, Bill, I wanna come back to your comments about safety. Would you, would you feel the same way about Main and Madison Street apartments?
That's the, well, I knew, was the people that we it was, they sort of checked out to see how many children were living in that complex. It's rel- it's relatively small in the Main and Madison, compared to, but I hope, but I hope goes into this affordable, to, to put Nyla's point, I hope that this project uh, produces a place for family, families with kids.
So my question is, is, is pretty simple. In, in your mind, then, you're saying that if we have fifty to seventy kids in this property versus twenty, that this project is less safest or self-defining?
I believe, there's no way, there's no way somebody doesn't get hurt. There's no way. There's no way. My, everybody's had kids, they all cross the road, they're gonna go across. There's no way to stop, they know where the park is. They might go, I'm not, I mean, they have a great aquatic in the back, but, I, we think Nyla, she's our daycare person, because she's the safest person we do. You know, and, and no offense, but she had plans for everything. I see this as a contradiction to our caring for our kids. I mean, I hope there's kids that move into any one of these projects. I also know how kids are, they're not staying there. They're not, that's the little toe of Wanakee. Everything else is somewhere else. And I, 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 I don't feel honest, I, I, again, I'm not against the project, I think the project is good, I despise where it is, because there's nowhere to go there. There's, the marsh is one boundary, and then you have roads everywhere else, and there are busy roads. And, and Aaron, I know lived on a busy street, but it's, it's a matter of how many people you got, it's just, it's just simple.
Jason, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just offering a rebuttal to that, in that I think we've got a stoplight with controlled crosswalks, half a block off from the site to the corner of Holiday, and there's nothing really immediately across the street that's a problem. There's just more apartment buildings, and so the route to get to, uh, the, the park is still taking you over to Holiday, so, um, and I think there are gonna, there are lots of places in the village where, um, you know, traffic is a risk to kids, and whether we're talking single-family homes or any kind of housing, uh, schools, parks, anywhere where there are risks, and it doesn't, this site doesn't jump out to me as being particularly more dangerous, uh, because of its location.
I just see all of them also make bikes cross, they're not gonna go out in the park to go to Ripford to play soccer, they're not. They just won't, I, I've had kids, they're not gonna do, they're gonna cross the road there, and maybe we can park it. And maybe you can put stoplights up, and maybe you can put a stoplight right there, so they can cross. But you'll have to do something, because somebody will get hurt.
So there's a lot of concerns with this, you guys, and, and one of them was, there's only one exit out of the building. So all the traffic here, you talked about, it's gonna come one spot, unless they change something recently, is that right, Kevin?
That's right, we've asked for a TIA, we don't have it back yet, I think they're waiting on the funding issues before they proceed with their TIA.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's another issue I see as a significant problem with this, is the trash are coming out of that building at the time, it's Gary mentioned, I think it was Gary. Um, there's gonna be a lot of traffic coming out, are we gonna have a left turn out there? Are we, I mean, there's, there's gonna be all kinds of things that we're gonna have to consider with that location. And I'm, I'm, I'm kinda siding a little bit with Bill right now, um, on that location. And I, I mean, I wanna get a project, and I want, I wanna be able to have them use the line tech project. Now, those spots, I, I understand a part of it, I'm just, I'm really struggling right now with the location. I'm with you, I'm with Bill on this one. To a certain degree, with it's a busy spot right there, too, a lot of cars coming right to there. Uh, I, I don't even like going to Big Le Wiggly, because you got McDonald's and Big Le Wiggly people urgent, almost running into each other, pretty rich, right, right there. So.
And, Chris, can I say something?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I do wanna point out that the planning commission has approved the conditional use permit for the property to allow it to be used for multi-family. So, e- e- just even, even if, you know, even if the village board decided, you know, not to provide systems, um, that, that, they could put multi-family there, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that, that stuff works better. I understand there's a difference if you provide money and not all that, but I just wanna make sure everyone's aware of that fact. Yeah, I know. Ryan, I think that speaks to what, you know, some of the safety concerns that you had, if it was more closely related to market rate, that you're not gonna get the, you know, you're not gonna get the, you're not gonna get the kids, you're not, you're gonna get the millennials that that it's on the forward hand of the spectrum that are gonna drive cars. Yeah, and that, and that's fine, I just wanted to point, just personally, I want everyone to have the information.
Phil, you look very stoic. I, I, I don't hear any thought, or you, I mean, you have a thought on this? I'm, I'm kind of stunned right now. Go ahead, Bill.
I have a question, is it for Brian here, for Jason, or Nicole? Like, is it, is, when they do one of these very hard-to-get line tech, is that the correct word, you're saying, I apologize? Projects, is that, is that fixated to the piece of land, or is that the community thing?
Yes, the award is specific to this site, because part of their award is based on a number of scoring factors, including the location of the project.
And I'll add that it's specific, the, the award sets a number of units, and the mix of unit types within. And once it's awarded, you, you, you can't really go back and renegotiate that, right, Nicole? And so, that's, you know, so the, the pickle they found themselves in, in realizing that they didn't really have enough space for the project, uh, wasn't as simple as just shrinking the project.
I have one more, I'm sorry for mugging time. For Kevin, I guess, is it feasible to put another stoplight to allow people to cross down there, or is there we have something we can do?
At Holiday, it's, it's gonna be tough, because it's a three-way intersection, it's in order to meet the warrants, it's not gonna be our decision, it's gonna be a DOT decision. I mean, it is potentially, we could get one of those, you know, the flashing RFBs, you know, down in Holiday, you know, that would be an appropriate spot, but you know, you know, you guys on the list, the streets, so like, coming in from that direction are, are pretty high, so it's not like, it's not like a great place to like, have kids crossing to get, to get down to.
Excuse me, don't we already have a stoplight on Holiday?
Yeah, Holiday, I mean, I think, Bill was thinking, like, if he took, went the other way, like, we're trying to get to down Ripford, by College, so.
There's, there's, there's no streets that crosses there, and there's apartments on both sides.
Right, I think Bill was asking, is, would we get a stoplight now at, uh, Dorn, because that's if you were gonna like go to Dorn, you wouldn't like to go down to, to, you, you would go all the way down to Holiday, you'd go up to Dorn, and then, then go up to Ripford.
That's right. So, the other thing I'm thinking about this is, I don't wanna have this statement system that we, 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 we put the poor and underprivileged in a, the poorest, worst spot, we can put them in, based on, you know, Bill's-